All right, welcome, everybody. We're gonna get started again for our presentation period. If I can get everybody to find a seat. We're gonna call back to order the City of Desert Hot Springs regular meeting of the City Council, and the City Council serving as a successor agency to the Redevelopment Agency Board and the Housing Authority Board for June 19, 2018. This is our 5:30 presentation. Tonight, we have one presentation to multiple people. So I'm gonna head down to the podium there, and then I'm gonna call the individuals up, and we'll talk about it a little bit. All right. So when the state of California started to transition the Redevelopment Agency, and local entities had to sell off their properties, there was a process put into effect, and it was an oversight board. These individuals would hear the needs of the Redevelopment Agency and be able to make the decisions. We want to recognize those individuals for all their hard work over the last, was it four, six years? Six years, and we wanted to say thank you. They have their last meeting for the City of Desert Hot Springs tomorrow morning. And now it's consolidated into another group through the county, and we're very fortunate to see one of our members, which we'll talk about, that received an alternate, so a lot. But it's only, how many members on that, Russ? Of the county? Is it seven? Seven, and then an alternate, or two alternates? So we will hopefully have a little bit of a voice in that room sometimes. So with that said, I'd like to introduce a couple individuals. Mr. Russ Martin, would you come up here? Mr. Armando Rodriguez, would you come up here? And I don't see anybody else in the room. Oh, yeah. Ms. Doria Welms, would you come up here? Make sure, she has to be on your left or right side?
Thank you for the last time.
Yeah, so if she walks around you, you know why. She has a good side. Russ has two good sides. It doesn't matter which side he's on. Armando, do you have a good side or a bad side? It doesn't matter? All right. And so I'd like to recognize the individuals. So there's appointments by certain individuals, and the appointment by John Bonoy, who was our late county supervisor, to this, and was our vice chairman, was Mike Walsh, and he is not able to make it today. I believe he works in Riverside and was not be able to get back in time. The other appointments, Mission Springs Water District, which is the largest special district in our area, and the appointment for that is obviously Russ Martin, who sits on the Water District Board. For the Riverside County Superintendent's appointment, Julie Arthur, who was trying to make it here tonight, and this is for education, so Palm Springs Unified School District is the entity in the district, and they had Julie Arthur as the appointee. The California Community's Colleges Chancellor's Office appointed Mary Jane Sanchez Fulton, who represents College of the Desert as a trustee for our district. She was also trying to make it. One member of the public, which is appointed by the county Board of Supervisors, public being within this district, or this area, and Armando Rodriguez, who's a local business owner of Ocean Springs Pool, and he was appointed to this and has sat there for six years, going through all this heartache and all that stuff, but we appreciate and thank you for all your service there. And then the mayor's appointment for an employee of the former Redevelopment Agency appointed by the mayor, and we appointed Doria Welms for that. So with that said, we have a little recognition from the mayor's office and the city council. It basically says, "The mayor and the city council of the City of Desert Hot Springs hereby honors, in this instance, Chairman Russ Martin, in appreciation for your service on the RDA Successor Agency Oversight Board, July 3, 2018." We thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
And this one's specific to Board Member Armando Rodriguez. Thank you for your service. And this one's specific to Board Member Doria Welms. And as chairmen, is there anything you'd like to say?
I wanna extend appreciation to city staff for all the hard work they did, and particular kudos to Linda Kelly, who provided us with excellent, easy-to-read documentation and presentations, and you should be getting one of these, too, I think, because you were awesome. Thank you.
Anything you guys would like to add? Russ speak well for you? All right. He's a good guy. With that said, we'll take a quick picture, and you guys are off. He didn't want me to speak anymore. That is the only presentations tonight. We'll take a 20-minute recess till the general meeting starts. All right. Welcome. Everybody has their seats. The flags are ready. I think we're ready to call this meeting to order. This is the City of Desert Hot Springs Regular Meeting of the City Council, and the City Council serving as a successor agency to the Redevelopment Agency Board and the Housing Authority Board for June 19, 2018. Here at the Carl Mays Center, it is a 6:00 PM regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts.
Present.
Councilmember McKee.
Present.
Councilmember Pye.
Here.
Pro Tem Savala.
Present.
Mayor Mattis.
Present.
We do have an invocation tonight. I'm assuming you want them to stay seated?
Yes.
Okay. And this will be by Councilmember Pye.
And this is my Jane Beech, and it's regarding animals. At the low point in my life, I laid on the couch, deep in despair. Our dog, usually gangly and goofly, slowly approached and gently rested her head on the couch in front of my face. She quietly looked into my eyes, as if she understood exactly what I was feeling. I was comforted by the depth of her compassion. At the moment of creation, we are all created as gifts of love, peace, and joy, born from the one that adores us, including our pets. There are all kinds of families, those we were born into, married into, partnered into, adopt by association, and those we consistently create. The minute we bring home a pet, we're created a family. Sometimes our very best friends are furry, scaly, or feathery. They light up with joy when they see us. They somehow know when we need extra attention and are willing to provide it. What a blessing to have a pet that makes our hearts smile, and when we think of them, their devotion is without limits. Taking care of them becomes an extension of taking care of ourselves. Our pals' contentment becomes our delight. Pets calm us, make us laugh, teach us loyalty, and give us a purpose for being when we can't find it for ourselves. That's what love does, and pets are good at it. We weren't meant to give love and receive it. Our pets remind us of what really is important.
Thank you very much. Tonight, our flag presentation will be by Troop 1606. They will also lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
And pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Troop 1606. Tonight, our city attorney will report on closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We do have one reportable action this evening. That reportable action is on the agenda item number two, which is real property negotiations. The city will be purchasing the real property, which is a vacant lot with APN number 639-252-039, from the successor agency. That vote was a 4-0 vote, with Councilmember Betts recusing himself, and the purchase price was $22,542. And that concludes my reportable action.
Thank you. Tonight, we will move on to the approval of the agenda. I know Mr. McKee made mention that he needed to pull an item. Is that true?
He has, Spencer Mayor, I'd like to pull item 18.
Any other items on the consent calendar?
Motion to approve pulling item 18.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there anybody that would like to speak on any consent items that are on the consent calendar that are gonna be approved now besides item 18? Going twice, and public comments are consent calendar. All right. With that, and nobody coming to the podium, we'll close public comments, and please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
We'll now move on to public comments. At this time, pursuant to the Brown Act, any person may comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council not listed on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the city council shall not take action on or discuss matters raised during the public comment portion of the agenda that are not listed on the agenda. This basically means if you have an item that you'd like to speak to that's not agendized, you may fill out a blue speaker card in the back of the room and hand it to the city clerk over to my right, your left, and you can speak on any item that's not on the agenda tonight. All comments are to be directed to the city council, and shall be devoid of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain professional courteous decorum during the public comments. Our first public comment tonight is Gary Gardner, who's gonna be giving an update from the Planning Commission, followed by Nina Duarte.
Good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor. Gary Gardner on the Planning Commission, with our Planning Commission update from our last meeting. Due to the resignation of our former chair, now Councilwoman Pye, we elected Larry Buchanan as the chair and Scott De La Torre as our vice chair. The agenda was light this month. We had some minor modifications to several cannabis facilities, which will be covered under a future agenda item for a proposed regulation allowing for administrative approval of those changes. In the future, we won't be acting on those. The one item that was of significance was we approved a change in liquor licensing for the Rancho Grande Market, moving from a Class 20 to a Class 21, allowing the sale of spirits. Previously, it was just beer and wine there. There was significant discussion on the commission. We approved it with the security of a locked cabinet and evening security guards, as the applicants had put in their application, and we added a provision that the approval be reviewed in a year with a report of any additional criminal or illegal activity as a result of moving from beer and wine to spirits. And that's our report for this month. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nina Duarte, followed by Linda Barak.
Thank you. Nina Duarte, Desert Hot Springs resident. I am here this evening to thank everyone that participated, that donated, that contributed, that volunteered for the Emergency Preparedness Seminar that was held for the first time at the high school. Deputy City Manager Luke Rainey, thank you for all of the attention that you gave us and your directions. Mayor Pro Tem Savala and Councilmember Betts, thank you for your generous contribution. If it hadn't been for the two of you, you literally saved this event from not occurring. So it was through your donations that we were able to have a successful event. I believe that it went well. According to the press, it went very, very well. We were shy of 200 residents that participated at the seminar. However, we had 19 volunteers, only the young ones. We had 19. Two of them I always fail to mention, which are my two grandchildren. They were the ones, well, especially my grandson. He was the one that helped me unpack boxes, break up boxes, and between him and his sister Mia, were the ones that prepared the bags. We handed out almost 200 of them. I brought five of them today for our council, as well as for the city manager. So I will leave them here. And we look forward to next year having the same event at the same location, which is the high school. I got calls from several principals wanting to have that event at their school. However, our host was Oxnard High, I'm sorry, I'm thinking, I'm back home. It was Desert Hot Springs High School, and we will certainly be going back. Chief Mondary, thank you for your harsh words of telling us how to prepare. We need to hear that from time to time. And to our fire chief, who's not here, the abundance of goodies that he gave us that are not in the bag, they went specifically for the childcare portion of our event. He gave me enough to take care of two pre-cases and two other nonprofits that were for children. So when I opened the boxes, when I got the boxes, I could not believe the generosity that the community gives back to the community. So to all those volunteers, thank you so much. Our chair couldn't be here today. He's on vacation, Frank Elmore. So he sends his regards. And on behalf of the entire committee, thank you so much for your support.
Thank you for what you did. All right. Our next speaker is Linda Barak, followed by Mike Bacardi. Mike Bacardi is my last blue card. Anybody here to speak in public comments on items not on the agenda? This is the second call.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi. My name is Linda Barak, and I'm the president and CEO of Martha's Village and Kitchen. And your mayor asked me if I had gotten lost, because Martha's is at the furthest end of the valley in Indio. So I'm here to talk to you about homelessness, and you might be looking at me and saying, "Well, Indio, Desert Hot Springs." But I want to let you know, during the first five months of the year, 57 people from Desert Hot Springs were housed at Martha's. We served 239 clients during that period, of which 122 were children. Think about it. 230-ish, 122 children. Of that number, those who exited, 97% went to affordable housing, which equates to 146 people during this period. Martha's Village and Kitchen offered professional case management and employment services, at which we were very obviously successful. We found that many of the people from Desert Hot Springs returned to the community, but this time, they had jobs, they had funding for housing, and they were on a good path. So welcome back all of those that were at Martha's to Desert Hot Springs and their home community. Martha's during this period had over 300 volunteers who offered 14,000 hours to serve those who are in need. Martha's Village and Kitchen also was awarded a contract by the City of Palm Springs to do case management for their homeless population. This is an extension of the effort in the West, and we're honored to be there, and I'm sure we'll run into some of your members of your community there. We also offered to 98 clients, adult clients, full employment services, which included video interviewing, resumes, beginning, intermediate, and advanced computer skills, and we do quite well at placing our clients, allowing them to move forward. Another phenomenon of Martha's is that we have a lot of seniors. Last year, we had over 850 walk through our doors. Also, I want to mention that with outreach, over 3,000 contacts were made with Martha's during five months. 3,000. 52 children were in our daycare center. Martha's thinks and knows that a valley-wide approach is the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda, for everything you guys have been doing. Mike Bacardi, and I did have another slip-in. Bruce Hutchinson will follow Mike Bacardi. Again, second call on public comments.
Good evening, council staff, citizens. My name is Mike Bacardi. I just wanted to do a quick report from the first gem in the desert concert that we had, that was presented by the Community and Cultural Affairs Commission this past Friday. We had roughly 50 to 60 people attending. The rap performers and the winners of the Battle of the Artists, I'm sorry, the rap performer who won the event split his winnings with the other two artists that were there. I want to give my thanks and shout-out to Maine Turner, Lynn Paul, Citizens on Patrol, the police for their enjoyment of the music and the chips and the water, and also, last but not least, Public Works employee, a guy named Otto, who came over from his house around the corner and made sure we had anything and everything we possibly could need. So I know that came down from staff when we filed all of our papers and things. So again, thank you. Quick reminder, mark your calendars for July 20th for the next one, which is an Evening of Jazz. Again, it's at Tedesco Park. Changing moods here. There is a humanitarian crisis that is destroying families. This has been condemned by religious leaders of every cloth, by the United Nations on Human Rights, by nations throughout the world, and by hundreds of thousands of people in the United States. I am talking about the policy of this administration acting on my and all of our behalf. That tears children as young as three years old, yeah, that's right, three years old, speaking of children, from their mothers, fathers, and even their brothers and sisters. These children are being held in government facilities that are overcrowded and understaffed. They are being held in cages. They are being held in cages in the United States of America. We have only seen the boys and the young male adults. Where are the girls? Where are the infants? Some of whom have been taken from their mother's breast as they were being fed. How and by whom are they being taken care of? Our, our government, your government, my government refuses to let our elected officials see where these stolen children are being held. Remember, our elected officials are being denied access to these innocent children. Where are they? These children and their families will suffer long-term emotional, psychological damage, and who will be responsible for them? We will be. We are responsible for them. This is our president declaring they be separated as a deterrent to stop illegal immigration. I am calling on the City of Desert Hot Springs, the mayor, council, and staff to vote for a non-binding resolution condemning this reprehensible behavior of the president who is ripping apart children, families, and brothers and sisters. Please be the first city to vote on this non-binding resolution.
Here's three minutes, or else.
Demanding the process stops, let us set the bar for condemning this destructive process.
Thank you very much. Bruce Hutchinson is our last speaker. Again, if anybody would like to speak in public comments, the blue card back there and hand it into our city clerk. Mr. Hutchinson?
Good evening. Hope everyone's doing well, and I apologize for this. I wanted to give a special consideration and a wonderful thanks to Doria, because Doria has just been so exemplary in everything that she's done to help us with our regulatory permits. She is 100% there with everything she does, and without her, we would not have stayed in Desert Hot Springs. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I have, nobody else would like to speak in public comments? Anybody else would like to stand and speak in public comments? This is your final, final call. James, are you gonna sing or dance? Come on up. Come on up. Make sure when you're done to go back and fill out one of those blue cards, okay, and hand it into the city clerk. And your three minutes will start when you state your name.
Hey, there, guys. James Velazquez. You guys know me. I will not sing or dance. I will just sing my praises. Either way, as always, thank you, guys, for the time. My main question is, as far as, I don't know if I speak for everyone in the industry, the medical marijuana industry here, but July 1st is coming around very soon. A lot of us are very, I wouldn't say confused, but we're looking at the legal aspects of things. I wasn't able to attend the last, last study group. The last study group I was at, I had to leave, sadly, but I got in my comments and I had what I had to say about taxes. But now, as we're going out there, and I'm taking my time away from the cultivation facility, where I'm normally in the garden, and I'm doing what I do, you know, dancing and singing with my plants, but really, I'm going out there, hitting the market. I'm going out to every single one of these shops, and I see some of the shops saying, "We've got until," they're gonna extend it for us, but what they don't see is that works for LA. You know, LA is doing that because, well, they haven't really gotten it together like Desert Hot Springs has, or even Palm Springs, or anyone down here outside of LA County. What I'm afraid for is something that's been happening in San Diego. The BCC has been going out, or they've done it before, where literally, within a week, they'll shut down over 20 shops. Boom, 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 like nothing. I'm wondering if there's, are we doing anything here in the city to make sure that the shops that we have here in our city? I know some of them are compliant, but some of them, I've heard stories, and I look at some packaging, I go, "That's not compliant." There's new regulations out there, tamper-evident proof, saying that, you know, the person that bought this product was the first one. Aside from that, it's gotta be child-resistant. You know, there are things that, Phase 2 is coming. July 1st is coming around fast. And the weird thing is, Vetsleaf and all the other ones, all the other companies are based out of here, Desert Hot Springs, are doing a great job of staying on top of what's coming, because after Phase 2 comes Phase 3. And that's what's coming in July 1st. I just want to know that, the last thing I want to see is for you guys to approve all these shops, and then for the BCC to come in and just say, "Nope, you're not good, you're not good, you're not good, you're not good." And there goes maybe half, or maybe even more than half, of the shops that you've approved. All right, you guys?
Thank you. You know, we can't have a back-and-forth conversation, but also, our staff is available to you. Maybe they can answer some of those questions.
I'll fill out that blue card.
Thank you very much. Any other comments tonight? Last call for public comments. Yes, sir. Come on up, Mark. Just come straight up, and then you can hand your card to the city clerk when you're done.
Good evening, everyone. Went to Colorado last week, spent four days with Danny Schaefer, and Colorado's got it going on in tourism. Every Lyft we got in, every Uber we got in, we asked, and they said, "Oh, man, cannabis tourism's been great." On-site use, not much of it in Denver, and what they did have has backed off a little bit. Aurora, the gentleman that spoke at CB Can, from, is it Aurora?
Pueblo.
Down, Pueblo. They've passed some ordinances that are working for them. Danny's planning, he's in Mexico with his family. He's planning on being here on July 9th, and he's coming to town. For him, we don't have to do anything. He can, he's good with the regs, the way they read currently, but we still need to be looking at how to be more inclusive, more of the grows, more of the cultivation, more for the dispensaries, more jobs. Anyway, guys, they're busy in Colorado, doing it right.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Last call, last call, last call. I see no one coming forth. We will close public comments. City manager's report.
I don't have anything tonight, Mr. Mayor.
About the mayor and councilmember reports? Who wants to go first tonight? Mr. Betts?
Thanks. Okay, just gonna run down the meetings I attended since the last council meeting. Southern California Association of Governments was a joint policy committee. Councilmember McKee and I went up there and sat in on that one. Nothing too big a deal, except they had talk about self-driving cars. At a previous meeting, the person who talked about self-driving cars said that they were gonna cause a traffic nightmare, because they needed so much distance between each car, and then the guy- And then the guy that we had at that meeting said, the last meeting we were at, said that they're going to be a panacea that they're going to eliminate traffic. So the staff said if we had any questions, my question was, figure out which one it's going to be because it can't be both. Then we worked on, there was some discussion around, on the regional housing needs assessment, and maybe Councilmember McKee will get into that in his comments. I'll leave that to him. He's been doing really good work in that area through his committee. And we did end up meeting with the director of SCAG to press the point, and I thought, you know, Joe, you did a really good job getting that meeting pulled together, and I think it's going to be productive. Attended the emergency preparedness summit, meeting, whatever it was, it was the event. Very well done. It was really interesting listening to all the public safety people talk about what they can and can't do, and the bottom line is, be prepared. Chief, you were quoted telling us, don't count on us to do anything. We're just going to be sitting there in the station playing checkers and...
Eating donuts.
Eating donuts, so, no, he didn't say that, sorry. The message was, you need to be prepared. Anyway, it was a very, very well put-together event, everything very well organized, and I was real happy to be a part of it. Then I wanted to attend the Little League, but that was at the same time. Managed to sneak over and get into the Rotary Day when they opened up the Furby Pool, and there was a nice attendance there. Attended on behalf of the mayor, I'm an alternate on Riverside County Transportation Commission. It's just a small matter there of voting on a $1.3 billion budget, so you missed that.
Tiny bit, yeah.
Yeah, it was, the one at SCAG was bigger. I think it was forty billion or something, but anyhow. So that was interesting. I stayed quiet, so you're okay.
Thank you.
Then, you know...
I'll still have my seat when I get back.
Yeah, yeah. No, it was very good. Actually, all the representatives from the Coachella Valley made a pretty strong pitch because we were left out of a study on future traffic congestion, and it was just receive and file, so they hadn't made any final decisions yet. But we told them, well, we really don't want to wait to get into the condition that you're in. We would like to make sure traffic continues to flow smoothly, so include us in that study. So I think we'll make some progress along that one. Attended the Airport Land Use Commission. Only thing that's coming out of that one is that the economic times are much better than they are because there's a long list of projects going on throughout Riverside County. We just review those for whether or not they're within airport influence area. So that was kind of encouraging. Just today was on a conference call with Sunline with some consultants, how to improve service. And I'm going to try and get something organized here in the city, or some other way to reach out to the riders, because they're asking me, well, what do you think we need to do to improve service? And I can think of some things, and increase the frequency on the bus to every fifteen minutes instead of every twenty minutes, and better bus stops, whatever else. But it's the people who are riding the bus that are going to come up with, I mean, it's the question you don't know to ask, or the answer you don't know to give, and that can only come from the riders. So I directed them that way, but I spent a half hour on the phone telling them what I thought. And then I'll have a Sunline meeting tomorrow, and we're going over the budget, and that'll be my last meeting as chair, so that was exciting, fun time to do that, but I'll get to sit back and let somebody else do all that hard, heavy lifting. And the only thing now is I learned that this company out there very soon, looking to hire, fill one hundred and sixty positions, I think the estimate, for marijuana cultivation jobs in our city. And a hundred and sixty, that is. That's significant. You know, those people out there, these are good-paying jobs. And I know there's one group here that's working on, through Smooth Transitions, and Mucci Holdings Group is looking to offer two apprenticeships, if I got this right. You can shake your head yes or no. You should, I thought you were going to mention that when you stepped up to the podium, but anyhow, leaving the duty to me. There are two scholarships. So, yeah, this is right here, scholarships. So the lucky recipients will also have the opportunity to be hired by, is it Mucci Holdings Group? And Mochi, okay. And so if you're looking for some employment and opportunity, get in touch with Smooth Transitions. They've got a vocational and educational school here in the city and doing good work. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. McKee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just wondering, chief, if you've got an entire stock of shelf-stable donuts for the emergency?
We know that they keep a long time.
They're not, well, I could say something. Mr. Betts talked about SCAG. There are a couple of other meetings I went to revolving around housing. And what we're trying to do is put together a program to deal with the housing shortage, with warehouses can be built, and some other things. So I talked this period of time with Hassan, how do you pronounce Hassan's last name? Russ? Heads up. Russ is, what's his?
Karata.
Karata, who runs SCAG, and made sure that he understood that in a lot of cases, the voices that are heard are the bigger cities, Los Angeles, San Francisco, San Diego, even Sacramento to a certain extent.
Are you advocating the split of the state into three? I was, I'm joking, I'm joking.
You'd be surprised what I'd say. The problem is, in Sacramento, they try and find a one-size-fits-all strategy. They don't deal with what's got us here, which are a bunch of decisions that were made in the seventies and have affected building housing since then. So I had a discussion with Hassan, basically saying, you need to be up in Sacramento representing the smaller cities as well as the bigger cities also. I then had about a twenty-minute discussion down at the VFW with Eduardo Garcia, and we're putting together a package of suggestions as to how we can succeed as far as building housing. And my fear doesn't revolve too much around various kinds of housing. We need entry-level housing, and part of our fee structures have made it uneconomical for builders to build entry-level housing. So we have to deal with that to make sure our younger people can have housing they can afford, move into, and then move up the scale of housing as their families get bigger. I also attended the jamming in the park. What was encouraging about that is it was a group of people that we generally don't get to a lot of events. So, yeah, I do appreciate the CCAC, and specifically Maine Turner, for working on that. I know he's volunteering a lot of his time and his effort for it, and I appreciate that. And that's basically all I have.
Mr. Savala?
I attended the Desert Hot Springs graduation ceremony, which was wonderful. It was great to hear all the speeches. It was very inspiring. And it's good to see them, you know, they're going to go off and they're going to make a difference in the world, and it's exciting.
Wait a few minutes. Was any of us there that forgot to mention that there also?
I think you all forgot to mention that.
Oh, okay, all right.
And then I also had a Lylec board meeting, rap grants committee meeting. I attended the CBB Annual Oasis Awards. One of the Cabots Pueblo Museum employees received an award in recognition, which was great, good PR for the city. I also had a Coachella Valley Conservation Commission meeting. I attended the opening of the new Palm Springs Unified School District Education and Administration Building in Palm Springs. It looks very modern, and apparently, you know, they definitely saved on the cost of construction by having some concrete walls, but they slapped some paint on it, and they made it look really nice. And then I also attended Dr. Sharon Brown-Welty's retirement celebration. She's the dean, or she has been the dean for Calsei-Samarino Palm Desert Campus for the past four years, and she'll be retiring. She'll take on more of a part-time role as a faculty member. But, you know, we're going to be missing somebody that's been really instrumental in growing the campus and bringing new programs, so hopefully, they find a good replacement for her. I also had a meeting with Jim Karpik from the Coachella Valley Mountains Conservancy, which I'm also a member of, and Chuck, I dragged Chuck out to Long Canyon. I didn't make him hike, though. We drove over there. But we were looking at some future parking lot locations for all the hikers, so that was nice. We identified two potential locations, so we'll see which one ends up working out. Unfortunately, one of the sites is managed by a different water agency, so it might be a little more difficult to get the permits for that. But either way, we're looking into that and making that happen. So hopefully, we'll see a reduction in some of the shooting out there and all of the debris that we end up seeing due to that. Thanks.
Ms. Pye?
Mine will be short because a lot of people already mentioned. I attended the Historical Society, where Councilwoman Parks gave her last hurrah as lausanne to the Historical Society. They have forty-seven members now, and they have joined the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce, for which we found out there are twenty-five members from Desert Hot Springs. And their next meeting will be July 5th at the Spa Hotel. Golden Eagles graduation was attended by Mr. Betts.
And the rest of them.
Councilmember Mattis and Savala. One of the major things for me that happened, and I'm going to share it with my twelve-year-old granddaughter, they created magnificent, I don't know what you would call them, sculptures, oh, also, the chief attended also, sculptures on the top of their hats. They wanted to do this, they had to coach the teachers into letting them do this, but they were awesome. Like, one had on the top of his hat a future police department. Other had prayers or what they wanted to do. Some had lights, but they were, I've never seen anything like it, and I found out it was the first time for the school. So we're starting something new. Also attended the Furby Pool, where Mr. Betts, Mayor Mathis, and Mr. McKee also attended. June 15th, attended the culture, God.
Community Cultural First?
Thank you, thank you.
Too many Cs in there.
Their rap group, and it was really good, and even though it was a small audience, it was a good audience, and the raps were very good. June 16th, attended the VFW 1543 breakfast with Mayor Assemblyman Garcia, and I think that Mr. McKee talked to him for more than twenty minutes. He really got in there, but it was all about Desert Hot Springs, and that's all good. There was a comment about the earthquake and emergency preparing a seminar. I just want to talk about that a little bit. It was an excellent seminar. There were translators, there were people for, to babysit the kids. All of the people were fantastic, and I'm glad you're going to do it again. And I just want to give respect to, and Councilmember Betts did a presentation that day. I want to give respect to the committee that put it together because it was an excellent presentation. Frank Gilmore, chairman, Carol Camelot, Nina Duarte, Judy Shea, Anna Costello, and Susie Doroto. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you.
And Nina Duarte forgot to mention she's on the Public Safety Commission.
All right. I also attended Desert Hot Springs High School graduation. I don't believe I've missed one since I've been on the city council in eleven years, and it always, every time you go, it warms your heart because you see kids that you've helped in Little League and friends of yours that graduate. I can't believe my very close friend, best friend here in the city, his son, his youngest son graduated, and I remember before that kid was even born, I remember when he was in mama's tummy, and he's graduating today. So it was great to see the graduation. I believe there was around three hundred and forty students that graduated from Desert Hot Springs High School again. And Esmeralda Saldivar, she was the valedictorian, and we named the Choya Street an honorary of her, as we do every valedictorian each year, that morning at eight o'clock, and she was able to unveil it and see her name up there, and her name will remain up there at Choya and Pearson for the next year, until the next valedictorian. So congratulations, she only graduated with a 4.61.
Oh, damn.
Yeah. Yeah. It's just incredible this day. I didn't, you know, I put my foot in my mouth about five years ago when I said there was, you can graduate with more than 4.0, and yes, they can now. So it was great. She's going off to UC San Diego, so, and it was great to see the other students graduate. So with that said, I also, the cities of Palm Springs, the whole city, asked that the mayors get together and talk about cannabis industry, the cannabis industry. And so us and the city managers got together and started to build a collaboration on the western cities here on cannabis, and talk about some of the issues facing all our cities. And it was quite surprising to see how we were all on the same page, working together rather than against each other, so it was really nice to see. June 9th was a very busy day. I was slated to speak for the earthquake preparedness when it was back in May, and unfortunately, they had to move the location, the dates, so May 9th, I mean, June 9th, for some reason, everybody wanted to do every event that day. So we had the earthquake, we had Rotary Appreciation Day at Furby Pool, and we had Desert Hot Springs Little League closing ceremonies. And if anybody knows me, I'm a longtime supporter of Little League, volunteer with Little League, and we have our oldest daughter and youngest daughter playing, so we had to be at Little League closing ceremonies that day. And the junior team for Little League is playing right now in Banning. Let's go Little League, and hopefully, they'll do well. But what a busy day that was. Congratulations to the earthquake preparedness, congratulations to Rotary for putting on your appreciation day again, and congratulations to Little League for another successful season. And jamming in the park, unfortunately, missed it because of a Little League game, but I heard it was very successful, and wanted to thank the CCAC again for putting it on and continuing those things down the line will be very important for community involvement in our community. I really had a short report today. Work has some special projects for me recently, so I spent a lot of time at work this last week, and thank you to Mr. Betts for stepping in for my transportation meeting, and Mr. Savala stepping in for the Oasis Awards for me. I had to cancel all my meetings last Tuesday and this last Wednesday, so I really appreciate all of you stepping up for that. And that's all I have today. So we're going to move on, if no one needs a break, to our administrative calendar. Anybody need a break? Okay. Our administrative calendar, our first item on our administrative calendar tonight is item number five, and we're going to be serving as the successor agency on this item. Resolution approving purchase and sale agreement enjoyed escrow instructions with Richard A. Finstra for real property located at 66071 and 66079 Pearson Boulevard, APN 641-021-006 and 641-021-048. And this is Mr. Duquette, right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my name is Steve Duquette, managing director with Urban Futures, where you're consultants for lots of different things, including the winding down of your redevelopment agency. With respect to your items on the agenda tonight, items five and six are similar because they both are included within your long-range property management plan that was approved some years ago, that our firm created for you. I remember presenting that to you one evening. It seems like it's a deja vu moment all over again. But the reason for saying this is, I'll give you the generic overview on item five, and unless you have questions, I won't repeat myself on item six, so we can cut right to the chase.
All I want to say is that tonight, before the meeting and presentations, we gave the oversight board recognition for their service because their last meeting will be tomorrow, so if you weren't here, there's seven members, I believe, from the oversight board that were given recognition, but I didn't realize it's been six years.
It's been six years.
That's incredible.
And I think I've been with you maybe four and a half, is that about right, Linda? Yeah, the owner of the firm decided he wanted to be here for a while. He loves you guys. But then he realized he was a fish out of water. I'm the chief redevelopment wind-down consultant at Urban Futures. So, by the way, it was very nice of you to make that recognition for your oversight board members. They all got the whopping salary of zero.
Yes.
I know that personally because I served on the oversight board for the community I live in, and they also went through a process of handing out some recognition and recognizing everyone, which was a wonderful thing. I've had the pleasure of working with twenty-eight oversight boards around the state of California and Desert Hot Springs, is at the top of that group for many reasons, but not least of which is offering solutions. And some places, it's, nobody says anything. Here, people like to talk, and they have many good ideas that were very helpful to us, so we really enjoyed that process, and I'm looking forward to being with them one more time tomorrow. With respect to item number five, you've covered that it's a matter that deals with Richard Finstra for the purchase of some land the successor agency owns. This is a long-range property management plan site, and your long-range property management plan consisted of sixteen parcels, and of the sixteen, four of them were government-related. Those transfers occurred some time ago, leaving twelve... were government-related. Those transfers occurred some time ago, leaving twelve sites. And then, I'll cover this in more detail for items six and seven, there were some properties that went to the Housing Authority as successor housing agency that were declared as surplus. They became the sites that would be a part of a sale process. Your long-range property management plan called out them to be sold. The Health and Safety Code and the Department of Finance, being the implementers of that, require all successor agencies that have land that's designated for sale to sell them as soon as you can, not to have a fire sale, go through a process, and then unless the proceeds of sale were needed to fund obligations of the successor agency, distribute those to the funds, to the Audit Controller for distribution to the taxing entities. So, fourteen sites were included in a listing process that I will discuss in just a minute. This particular site is the largest of the four, three-quarters of an acre, about thirty-two thousand seven hundred square feet. Because it's the largest, it's the largest price as well. Site number five in your long-range property management plan. You have an excerpt from the plan as an exhibit in your packet tonight. You can take a look at what was written about the site at that particular time. Now, to help this process, the successor agency hired, through a process of, similar to an RFP, hired NAI Capital, real estate agents, to help you in the process. They've been with you now for, oh, I want to say eighteen, nineteen months. With all of these in process, including the one you approved in closed session, every single one that was listed with them has either been sold or is now in the process to be sold. There's some procedures that have to be followed to enable escrow to close. But basically, NAI Capital kept their word, and they've been wonderful to work with. And their chief real estate representative is here tonight, and that's Lynn Coker. And I personally thank him for his efforts in the corner. Raise your hand. Lynn's been fabulous. And we wouldn't have been able to get here, and your Oversight Board knows that, without their diligence. So, we really appreciate that effort to make this seamless. Oh, it's easy to say that. I know there were some difficulties in closing some escrows, but that just goes with the program, you know, that kind of a thing. Now, with respect to this particular item, Mr. Finstra offered to buy this property, they're adjoining parcels, by the way, for ninety-eight thousand and ten dollars. I wonder why the ten dollars, now, don't worry about that, but that's exactly what he offered. It has to do with the calculation that comes up per square foot. And as a part of the agreement with NAI Capital, they agreed to prepare a broker opinion of value to verify the value of the site. They verified that the price that's been offered is their professional opinion of the value. And by the way, that means that you're able to say that this price is a fair and reasonable price to sell the property for. The Department of Finance accepts broker opinions of value as justification for the value of property. It's a routine matter for them. So, that's why we would do that. When you, considering the resolution tonight, if you approve it, that'll authorize this process to go forward. It goes to the Oversight Board tomorrow. And assuming their approval, then off to Department of Finance. And hopefully, a very short period of time, we get a letter that constitutes an approval. And then, we can open the escrow and begin this process. So, as I mentioned, it goes to the Oversight Board. The last thing I want to point out is because, and we're very happy about this, your successor agency is cash flow solvent. That means the amount of money that would be made available, like it was in the old days in redevelopment, it used to be called tax increment, now it's redevelopment property tax trust fund money, is more than sufficient to pay all your obligations. That means when these escrows close, the net revenue is contributed to the Riverside County Audit Controller, who then distributes those funds to the taxing entities in accordance with their own percentage of the general tax levy, the one percent levy that people are familiar with under Prop thirteen. So, that is the matter that's before you. There's a lot of material that would back this up. I'm certainly be happy to answer any questions you might have. But that would conclude my report. We do recommend, and together with staff and your real estate representatives, that this matter be approved.
Thank you very much. Is there any public comments on this item? Second call, final call. We'll close public comments. What's council's pleasure, Mr. McKee?
Move staff recommendation.
Is there a second? Mr. Betts?
Quick question. Do we have the record that indicates what the redevelopment agency paid for this property?
We do. And thanks to the very diligent work of your finance director, it's very easy to determine what that is. And for site, site number five, the original purchase price was three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
And so, we paid three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand for it, and we're selling it for ninety-eight?
Yes, I would say that the market's changed.
Yeah, well, thank God, RDA went away, huh? Okay.
What I can't tell, but although Linda might know, is the property may have been developed before.
No, it was blank. Do we have, do we have any indication of what the new owner intends to do with the property?
My understanding is they're going to ultimately develop or cause the property to be developed in accordance with your vortex plan. But I don't believe they're at the point of submitting any plans. That's just something that's, they'll pursue. Lynn, do you have any more than that?
The buyer of parcel five is the buyer of parcel four. His plan for development includes retail outlets, restaurants, live-work, an artist community, a coffee shop, and such, between West Street and Cactus along Pearson.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Well, that couldn't be more fabulous, what happens. But anyhow, okay, good. I appreciate that.
It makes up for a lot.
Guess this is time to dispose of this stuff. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If nobody else in the queue, would anybody else like to speak to this? If not, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item number six is successor agency, resolution approving purchase and sale agreement and joint escrow instructions with Richard A. Finstra for real properties located at sixty-six one forty-six Pearson Boulevard, APN six-three-nine two-three-two zero-four-zero. Steve, that's also you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, if we could waive the staff report and go ahead to a motion to approve the sale, I think we've all seen the packet.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second? Is there any public comments? I see no one coming forth. Please, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item number seven is the Housing Authority, will be serving as a Housing Authority now, the City Council will be serving as a Housing Authority. Resolution approving the purchase and sale of real properties and joint escrow instructions with Richard M. Johnson, Jr. for real property located at northeast corner of West Drive and Ironwood Drive, APN six-four-one dash one-nine-one dash zero-zero-eight.
Although the mechanical process for sale is the same, these two properties come from a different side of your former redevelopment agency in that those properties that were acquired with low and moderate income housing funds were eligible for transfer to your successor housing agency, which is in the city of Desert Hot Springs, the Housing Authority. And there were fifteen of those type parcels, two of which were later determined not to be necessary for affordable housing. They are items seven and eight on your agenda. They were listed with NAI Capital for sale. They are adjoining. They are ideal properties for single-family development. They're both exactly the same size, seven thousand eight-hundred-and-forty square feet. The purchase price for them are identical, and they all are three hundred dollars greater than the amount that was determined by NAI Capital as the broker opinion of value amount. So, in addition to that, because they're with your Housing Authority, it does not involve an Oversight Board review, does not involve a Department of Finance review. However, as part of the obligation as a successor housing agency, the proceeds of sale, the net proceeds of sale, need to be put into the Housing Authority's low and moderate income housing asset fund. The state added an additional word, an LMI-HIF. But that's the fund controlled by your Housing Authority for use in the future for a meritorious affordable housing project. And I know you're involved in those kinds of things in a forward-looking sense, so it's nice to have a little money that you could apply to a future project. We recommend that this matter be approved, and the approval of the resolution will allow this to afford. That concludes my report, unless you have any questions.
No, I have any public comments? Anybody would like to speak to this item? Yes, Bruce, you may come forth, state your name. Your three minutes will begin.
Thank you. I am a Realtor with Desert Pacific Properties, and we're probably one of the leading experts in the area. I don't remember, and we have put phone calls into NAI Capital, which haven't been returned. We might have people who might be able to give a more significant offer on these properties. So, I just would like to say that I don't think that it should be closed yet.
Thank you for your comment. Any other, anyone else that would like to make a comment? We'll close public comments at this time. Mr. McKee?
I'm bailing. I was gonna do something else, but we'll let Mr. Betts talk.
These are single-family lots in a residential neighborhood?
They are.
And what's the sale price of each lot?
Each lot, as it exists, would be sold for twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
What's the price of lots going for? That's what we're saying.
Well, that's based upon a broker opinion of value. I'm sure that Lynn can describe that. But what they do is look at comparable sales, and then that's included in the broker opinion of value. So, in the documentation that backs this up, the analysis is included in it. So, you can look at how they came to this.
Are we doing public notice of these properties, like listing them in a publication of public record?
And I would invite Lynn forward.
The staff answer that question? Are we posting these?
The answer is yes. When you listed, it goes on the multiple sales listing in the internet. They use a very wide process for advertising. I can't explain why a person that's in the redevelopment, in the real estate business, wouldn't know that these parcels were for sale.
How long were they on the market?
They've been for sale for twenty months and published by NAI Capital. So, anyway.
Yes, NAI received the contract to market all of the properties about November eighteen months ago. This property, these two properties went into all the listing services at that time. Over a period of eighteen months, we had several offers on the property. They were all much lower than the successor agency or the Housing Authority was willing to accept. And in all cases, those offers were turned down. Parenthetically, just today, we received another offer on the property, which is totally characteristic of every inquiry that we've had, except for the current one that's before you for decision this evening. Today, we had another offer, and they were coming in at ten thousand dollars a parcel. That is less than what we're able to get by going with the current offering, and I encourage you to accept it. I've worked this property for eighteen months, and that is the market value that we're going to be able to achieve this year. I can't tell you what it's going to be next year, but that's the value of that property now.
Thank you.
All right. I have nobody else in the queue. We'll see what would the City Council like to do? Would anybody like to make a motion? All right. I'll move staff recommendation. Is there a second? All right. Is there any more discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmember McKee opposed.
All right. Item number eight is the Housing Authority Resolution approving the purchase and sale of real properties and joining escrow instructions with Richard M. Johnson, Jr. for real properties located northwest corner of Santa Isabella Drive and Ironwood Drive, APN six-four-one dash one-nine-one dash zero-zero-nine.
Yes, same buyer, same size of lot. They are actually adjacent to one another. They're both corner lots, and same price. So, the conditions are exactly the same.
Mr. Mayor, motion to approve.
Motion on the table is our second. Is there any public comments on this item? Yes, sir. Bruce, state your name. Your three minutes will begin.
I'm bringing over a hundred and seventy jobs to this community. I'm the one who put up the scholarships. With all due respect to everything that I'm hearing for, and I'm no disrespect to anybody who's trying to do this, when a real estate agent gets a phone call, it should be returned. There is a pricing, there is a housing crisis here. Affordable housing has to be done. All I'm asking is that we get an opportunity to show our clients the properties and see what we can do. That's all we're asking. More than happy to work with it, I'll even waive our commission. We're not looking to make money. We're looking to help the community.
Thank you very much for your comments. Any other public comments tonight? Final call, public comments are closed. Anybody like to make any comments?
Yeah, I would. I just want to respond, say, you know, these have been on the market for twenty months, and I understand opportunity may come along, but we've got a buyer who's gone through the process. I don't think the price is going to be substantially different. It's not going to be double, so I would say I'm comfortable with my motion to continue with the sale.
Yeah, and I, no disrespect to you, Bruce, or what you've said, I agree. We need to move forth on these properties. So, thank you for the offer, and we're gonna move forth, I think, at this point. Please, anybody else have any comments? Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmember McKee against.
Thank you very much. As an aside, there were thirteen properties retained by the Housing Authority as successor housing agency for affordable housing. And if you have interested parties within the city that have the capability of actually developing affordable housing that meets the income requirements, then there's a general invitation to bring their ideas forward.
Who made, Mr. Mayor, more discussion here, who's, what decision was made to retain these for affordable housing? Where did that happen?
Well, they, your Housing Authority accepted fifteen parcels from the successor agency that were purchased with low and moderate income housing funds. And they were transferred at no cost to the Housing Authority for affordable housing purposes, two of which were determined to be excess, and those are the ones that you just authorized for sale. But remember, you follow the land or you follow the money. So, you're converting real estate to cash, so that cash is now available for affordable housing. You don't get to use it for other purposes. So, it's retained and used for housing. But you have thirteen parcels that can be used for affordable housing. So, I'm hearing a person in the audience indicate they have personal or interest or that of others they know that might be interested in developing affordable housing. I'm just saying that they certainly should bring their ideas forward. There is more land available if there's a viable project. And it's easy to say that, and it's very hard to do. But anyway, I think the city is an open-door policy and would listen to proposals that would be brought forward.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm done with the agenda item. I'm just, was hearing something new that the Housing Authority met. I know we have a lot of items that we deal with up here, and if that came on the agenda and I'm missing it, fine. But I think we are the Housing Authority, right?
Right.
So, if there's been some decision made by the Housing Authority, I'll have to go back and research and see if that's something I voted for.
Okay. If you need to bring it forth, let us know.
Yeah, there's no decision on what hap, well, as far as I know, you may have done this for one or two parcels, but in the larger set, no, they're just there for future opportunities.
Thank you, Steve.
You'll work on those separately.
All right. I gotta move on to the next item. Item number nine, citywide janitorial services contract. Is this gonna be our community development director, Daniel Porres?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Currently, the city contracts out all janitorial services citywide. The contract will be ending soon. Therefore, on May twenty-first, city staff issued a request for bid proposals for citywide janitorial services. The notice in body bids was posted on our city website, on local newspapers, and with Planet Ripper Graphics, a local valley clearinghouse. Proposals were received from three bidders on June eleventh. The bidder, the proposals were reviewed by four evaluators, and they were reviewed based on the following criteria. There was contractor experience and qualifications, contractor performance on previous contracts, and the contractor's thoroughness and completeness of the proposal package. All scores were tabulated, and an average score was calculated to identify the most qualified bidder. From the three bidders that were received, Santa Fe Building Maintenance was scored as the highest bidder. Merchant Building Maintenance was scored second, and R&amp;R Janitorial was scored third. After staff reviewed, the most qualified bidder was determined to be Santa Fe Building Maintenance. Staff verified the references submitted by Santa Fe Building Maintenance, and all the references had positive comments. Staff also reviewed the bid amounts for Santa Fe Building Maintenance, and the bid amounts were found to be competitive. With that, staff is recommending that City Council award citywide janitorial services contract to the most qualified bidder, Santa Fe Building Maintenance, and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement between Santa Fe Building Maintenance and the city of Desert Hot Springs in an amount not to exceed a hundred and five thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents, plus a contingency of ten percent, which is ten thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-two cents annually for citywide janitorial services. which is $10,536.72 annually for citywide janitorial services. That concludes my staff report. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. At this time, we're gonna take public comments. Anybody like to speak to this item, may come to the podium, state your name, your three minutes will begin. Second call. Final call for public comments. We'll close public comments. I'll open up the city council, Mr. Betts.
The name Santa Fe Building Maintenance sounds familiar to me. Have they ever done work for the city before?
They did, oh, I'm not sure how many years ago, must've been maybe six, seven, eight years ago somewhere.
I think their bid was much higher before, $160,000, and then we got into a situation where somebody named ABM or ACM had bid on the job, and they were trying to bid on the job, and they couldn't get, somehow, they couldn't get their bid submitted, and they made some noise, and it got reback, opened up again, and then somebody else came along, and ACM actually lost. But there's just something that doesn't seem right on this one, and, well, the first thing I noticed is, the request for proposal went out on May 21st, that was mailed and posted? What does that mean, it was mailed?
Mailed is just emailed, sorry.
What, being emailed to who?
The original bidders that had billed our current provider and the original bidders that had billed in the past, which one of them was Santa Fe.
Okay, and then you closed the RFP on June 11th? How many days later is that? Fifteen?
It's three weeks, I believe, or two weeks.
Okay, I'm gonna, Mr. Mayor, it's time to make, I'd like to make a motion to reject this, and to tell the staff to put it out for a minimum of thirty days, and to contact everybody who's ever bid in the past. I would like to see the bid list, every other agency where I sit, I get a list of everybody was sent out to, I don't know if that's in here or not, I didn't see it.
Let's ask a question, is the bid list in here?
We actually post it on our city website and on Planet Reaper Graphics, which is open to all contractors in the state of California.
What I'm asking is, do I have the bid list in my packet?
The bidders that all went out to? Yeah, the bid list that we, that we received?
No, the, who you sent the requests to, and I'm at Sunline, they got a list of, like, twenty or thirty companies that they send something out to, and usually, they get four or five respond, not everybody's there, but you see everybody that went to, and I'm just trying to see, I don't see that in the packet here. I see the ones that responded. But anyhow, the main problem I got is, this is only out for fifteen days, and I think we went from, we saved a significant amount of money, I think we had it for, we're looking at eighty, you know, eighty-one, and the other one was at sixty-five, and I'm going from memory here, but it just seems to me that this is way too short of a bid period. And the next question I got, maybe somebody else in the queue's gonna ask that, is why aren't we taking the company that's eighty-one thousand instead of the one that's at a hundred and five?
Because the references did not actually, came back negative on that company.
Okay, anyhow, my, if I get the chance, I'd like to make a motion that we put this back out to bid for a minimum of thirty days, and make sure all passed.
And just to add to that, it was actually twenty-one days, which actually is the state minimum requirement, twenty-one days is the actual minimum requirement.
Well, you know what, I don't really much care what the state says, I'm kinda got, I think a minimum of thirty days is enough.
I think it was twenty, wasn't it?
Huh?
It's not twenty-one, it's twenty, nine days and, and eleven is actually twenty, the last time I added up.
We, we had long discussions up here in this council before that it should be a minimum of sixty days, and we kinda shortened it to thirty, maybe I can live with that, on something where you've got an aggressive effort to reach out to anybody who's bid in the past. So, anyhow, that would be my motion, I guess there it is, I'll make it.
Well, you did make a motion, if you wanna make that motion, you're more welcome to. Is there a second to that motion? There is a second, Mr. McKee, you're next in the queue.
Thank you, I've got a couple of questions, and I'm more concerned with the fact of who did respond. We had one person responded from the valley in Indio and put in a really, really big bid. The other two respondents are actually in the Chino Pomona area, which is like, what, an hour, ten minutes away, somewhere around in there. And my concern is, we don't have any more janitorial service companies in the Coachella Valley?
We do, we reached out to actually every city and found out who was actually servicing that city in particular, and contacted every city in the Coachella Valley.
I'm just concerned that I would have expected to get more bids from people in the area than just one bid, especially considering, I think, in this circumstance where we're getting the service we're talking about, you're talking about dealing with a company that's an hour, ten minutes away. I have some issues with that, so thank you.
Mr. Vala.
Just out of curiosity, I know you mentioned you contact the other janitorial services companies with other cities. When we talk about like, local businesses to, relative to Desert Hot Springs, do we ever, just as a protocol, do we, if we get a bid from someone that has a local business here in Desert Hot Springs that's interested in doing this, but maybe they haven't, maybe they haven't had that shot at like, having a contract with the city? Do we ever give them a shot and see whether or not it could work out?
Yeah, we review every, every proposal equally, but yeah, if we receive anybody, yeah, we'll give anybody a shot.
So, it's not necessarily that you have to have had a previous contract with another city?
No.
Okay.
Mr. McKee, are you back in the queue? All right, I have a motion to deny and go back to another thirty days bid. Please vote.
Motion to deny passes with Mayor Potemzavala, Mayor Mattis voting against.
All right, item number ten is the John Furby Aquatic Center Pool Maintenance Contract, and this is again our community development director, Daniel Pors.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item is similar to the previous item, it is a maintenance contract, this is for the John Furby Aquatic Center Pool Maintenance. Currently, the city contracts those services out, that contract is about to expire. Therefore, on May 21st, city issued a request for proposals. The notice in body bids was posted on our city website, local newspaper, and on Planet Reaper Graphics. From those, we received two proposals. Out of those proposals, we had four evaluators review the proposals based on contractor's experience, qualifications, performance, and thoroughness and completeness. The four evaluators evaluated the proposals, and we had One Stop Pool Pros rated at the top, and Ocean Springs Tech rated at second. Staff verified the references submitted by One Stop Pool Pros and references that responded had positive comments. Additionally, One Stop Pool Pros is a currently pool maintenance service provider for the John Furby Aquatic Center, and staff has had positive experience with their service. Staff also reviewed the bid amounts for One Stop Pool Pros, and the bid amounts were competitive. Staff recommends the city council award the John Furby Aquatic Center Pool Maintenance Services for, to One Stop Pool Pros as the most qualified bidder, and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement between One Stop Pool Pros and the City of Desert Hot Springs in an amount not to exceed $128,070, plus a twenty percent contingency of $25,614 annually for the John Furby Aquatic Center Pool Maintenance Services. That concludes my staff report, and we do have representatives from the company here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Would anybody like to make any public comments at this time? Second call. Final call on public comments, we'll close public comments, Mr. McKee.
I want to say something at the beginning of this, one of the people that's involved in this, the owner of Ocean Springs Tech, I'm a friend of, I serve with him on microloan of Desert Hot Springs microloan, and I'm just making that clear, he's never given me any money for anything as far as political stuff is concerned, I just wanna make sure that that's out there so that I don't get accused of something improper. I looked pretty carefully at this because there are some, there's some strange things as far as I'm concerned with, with the two bids. If you look at page 306, there are some significant differences between both the maintenance cost and the estimated annual chemical cost. If you look at it, the One Stop Pool people are quoting a price on the maintenance cost that is basically a quarter, no, a third, sorry about that, I'll get my math right, a third of what Ocean Springs Tech is, and on the estimated chemical cost, Ocean Springs Tech is $27,000 cheaper than One Stop Pools. And those sorts of variations sort of bother me. Do we have any estimate on how many hours a week are gonna be spent on the pool maintenance itself?
We do have the five days a week service that must be done by all companies, and we do have the total amount of estimated quantities that was set for each bidder to submit. So, each bidder, let's say for chlorine, estimate how much ten gallons or 10,000 gallons of chlorine would be.
The chemical stuff's real, real obvious, you've asked, actually listed how many gallons of everything.
Yes, for hours, we do not do it by hours, it's by day service.
Well, the problem I have is, what if, you know, the bids aren't that far apart in total? What if the one person is estimating he's gonna be spending seven hours a day on site, and the other person's estimating two? There's gonna be a significant service difference then at that point. So, in effect, what we're doing is, especially with the fact that we're putting in a contingency of $25,000, we're, we're putting ourselves in a position that the one firm is, could be trying to squeegee down, that's a technical term, on the, on the amount of hours that they're actually billing for that, and it may not be enough time to actually fulfill what we want as a contract.
We, we currently contract with One Stop Pool Pros, which is the lowest one, and their current bid is actually higher than what they're actually submitting for, so we're pretty confident on their services, we don't have, haven't had any issues with their services.
How many hours a day do they spend on site?
We don't calculate hours, it's just a daily service.
So, everything's been perfect as far as what they've done?
Yes, it has been, not perfect, but good, very good, no issues.
You, I got you there, didn't I?
Yeah, we, we're not, we're not gonna pay somebody to be there eight hours a day, just as any other pro service, we'll pay them to do the daily service, that's what.
Well, but what I'm saying is, you've got estimates that are, that are based on someone saying what, what that person thinks is going to be the minimum needed to keep the pool up. And if, if we think everything that's going on right now is perfect, then I think we have had some issues in, in the last year, as far as I'm concerned. We've had some situations where we've had to bring the guy back to work on it.
Right.
In circumstances where, where the system was out of whack, and then that sort of thing was going on. So, that's the reason I'm sort of bringing this up. I think you've got one person that's estimating a higher level of service than the other one. But anyway, that's just my personal opinion, thank you.
Mr. Vala.
Once again, I think, I really want us to think about our procurement preferences. I know we have some things outlined in terms of like, a local preference in our ordinances, but it's not, it's kind of vague. I really think we do need to look at like, how are we gonna structure this to ensure that our local businesses are getting business from the city? Because, and I think like, in the ordinance or resolution, whatever it is, it, it talks about how that's beneficial to the city, right? Growing the businesses in the city ultimately is a revenue booster for the city. So, I think that that's something that's really important. I think when you look at like, the county's procurement policies, they're a lot more clearly defined in terms of how they live, give local preference to businesses within the county, and I think we need to do a better job of outlining that for, for the city itself. I mean, kinda to echo a little bit about Joe's comments here, I mean, if we've, if we've had somebody that hasn't done this before, and they're a local, they're a local business, maybe they're not exactly, maybe they may be overestimating how much time is gonna be needed to service the pool. But at the end of the day, it's true, I mean, it's an $11,000 difference with a $25,000 contingency. So, my question is, are those $11,000 worth not giving that opportunity to a local business? That's, that's kind of my question, like, on a broader, on a broader level, how, what are we doing to boost our local businesses? And is $11,000 really that much of a difference to where we wouldn't give that opportunity to a local business? That's all I have to say.
Mr. Betts?
Yeah, we, we've got some discretion here, I believe, and we have a local bid preference ordinance, and I can't remember if that applies to all the Coachella Valley or the Desert Hot Springs, I know I made a pretty strong pitch before that it should only be, huh?
It's the region.
Yeah, the region.
It's the whole Coachella Valley, it's nine cities and it's five percent.
Desert Hot Springs only, and it was five percent, I think, so we have that on the books, I'd like to see that get modified sometime, but we can modify it now. What I would like to do, Mr. Mayor, is I'd like to make a motion to award the contract to Ocean Springs Tech, recognizing that there's not that big a difference in the two bids when we put in the five percent bid preference for a local company, I'm talking very local, and that we take the contingency from 25,000 or down to 10,000 rather than a 25,000 contingency. I really can't see the reason for the contingency. So, it would be to award the contract to Ocean Springs Tech with a $10,000 contingency for the Furby Pool, that'd be the motion.
If the motion gets approved, can I just explain the contingency amount, Bruce, real quick? The contingency is only for broken items, we have very, very expensive equipment there. One pump could cost $20,000, any type of tubing costs very expensive, it's not for services, it's for extra equipment that gets damaged during the year.
Okay, well, that'll just have to come back on a separate budget item when the pool goes into effect, that's my motion.
All right, I have Mr. Vala, Mr. Betts back in the queue, are you guys out?
I have, I have one more thing to say.
Yep, go ahead.
I also did wanna say, I also serve on the microloan board, along with Armando, who owns the Ocean Springs Tech. However, I have also not received any monetary like, campaign contributions or anything of that sort, I just know him by also being a board member for the microloan board, and aside from that, interestingly enough, that board is specifically about growing local businesses.
Ms. Pye.
Is the fiscal impact the same?
No, it'll be increased. We would have to, I'm not sure.
Right, but would we still be within?
I'm not sure yet, we'd have to review that.
Mr. Betts?
Yeah, the only thing is, if anybody's having any hesitation, is the last one, we've, you know, opted for, you know, the higher bid, because I think there's certainly justification to do it here, it's not that much money, we're gonna be having local dollars, churning in the local economy, creating local jobs, that's gonna come back to helping all of us with, and I just think it's better. And I wanted to say that I've had occasion to talk to One Stop Pool Pro, they're not a bad company, I've, they've been responsive as I've dealt with them, but I think this is a good move for the community.
All right, I have nobody else in the queue, if there's no other comments, please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmember Pye opposed.
Item number eleven is the Notice and Call of General Municipal Election to be held on Tuesday, November 6, 2018, and this is gonna be our city clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. So, this item is the kickoff for the city's general municipal election, which is scheduled to be held on Tuesday, November 6, 2018. Before the offices of mayor and two council members, the mayor's seat is a two-year term currently, and then the two council member seats are for a four-year term. Before you this evening, our two routine and customary resolutions that are required to be adopted prior to the election. The first resolution is a notice and call of election, and also request consolidation with Riverside County and the services of the registrar of voters to conduct the election. The second resolution before you is concerning the optional candidate statement, so should a candidate want to submit a candidate statement for inclusion into the voter's pamphlet, there is a $400 deposit that was determined by the registrar of voters as the approximate cost of printing, and then the candidate would be charged, either charged the actual cost or be refunded the difference. Candidate statement is limited to recitation of the candidate's own personal background and qualifications, and shall not in any way make reference to other candidates for that same office, or to another candidate's qualifications, character, activities. Furthermore, so what is often referenced as the nomination period, so the nomination period for this election will begin on Monday, July 16th, and it'll go through August 9th. That is the official period when anyone can come and meet with me, meet the city clerk, to, to receive nomination period papers, and then they would go out and gather their signatures and complete all the required paperwork, and then file those papers within that time period. Additionally, there is a candidate filing fee pursuant to the city's municipal code of $25, that's due at the time that nomination papers are filed. The fiscal impact for the election, so the election is estimated to cost between 30 and $45,000, currently, $35,000 has been appropriated in the budget, and if there is, if the cost And if there is, if the cost should exceed that, we would come back with a budget adjustment. With that being said, I recommend that the council adopt the resolutions before you. One is calling, giving notice and calling the election, and the other one is for the candidate statement. That concludes my staff report.
Do you have any public comments on this item? See anyone standing, no one coming forth? Closed public comments. Mr. McKee?
Move staff recommendation.
And Mr. Betts?
Just, I know you gave some indication that you're going to be monitoring to make sure certain things apply to the candidate's statement, to make sure that they are, I forget what you said exactly, but you're going to watch, make sure that there isn't anything that's out of line there. One thing I would encourage you to watch is the names that are submitted. One year, we had somebody who took a Spanish translation of their name, and I think it was Pandaro or something like that, and put that on as their ballot name, which wasn't their name. So maybe if you see anybody trying to do anything like that, that you would also restrict that. I think the city attorney could probably deal with that one. But if that isn't their legal registered name, I don't think you could just go, you know, take and say, hey, well, the translation of my name in Spanish is this, and then have that be your name.
Thank you. Do I have any other comments? All right, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
And that's for both resolutions? That's okay to do?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we're going to take a seven-minute break.
...
Alrighty, let's get back to the meeting. Alright, so we're gonna resume our meeting. We're on item number 12, resolution calling and noticing a proposed measure to be submitted to the voters of the general municipal election on November 6, 2018, to select a mayor on a rotating basis. This is sponsored by Mr. Betts and Mr. McKee, who would like to go.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. A while back, the city had a proposal like this on the ballot, and at that time, I wasn't in favor of it. I took it as an affront on the present mayor at the time. Things were very heated and very political, and I thought, well, this is just trying to, you know, do something against a mayor that I was working with, and I really didn't understand the situation. And then, as the years passed, I realized that, and I see the way other city councils have handled this issue and deal with this, is that I thought, you know, it was probably a mistake back then. It would probably be a much better system. If you, when you interact with other council members, Ranch Mirage, Indian Wells, Indio, whoever else has this system, it's a pretty orderly transition. It's, each council member would take a turn in the position, and while our present mayor, I think, is doing a good job, and I very appreciate what he's done since he took over, to reach out and keep things calm. That hasn't been the history of our city calm. In fact, there's been a lot of turmoil and commotion, and it's also been centered around the mayor's seat largely, with some of the things that have come up off my comments and whatever, history of all that commotion. So, I thought, and Councilmember McKee agreed to put this on with me, and he can certainly offer his comments, but this made sense, because, I mean, you look at Ranch Mirage, everything's just an orderly symbiotic relationship, and I think part of the benefit is this, is that, for example, if Councilwoman Zavala would end up being in the mayor's chair through her rotation of the process, now she gets a full appreciation of what it's like to run the meeting, and then when you're sitting in the seat after you've had your turn, maybe you go a little easier on the mayor, because you go, wow, you know what, that's not so easy. Something I learned, you know, chairing at Sunline, is that it's a lot of work, and so you've got a lot on your mind, and, you know, sometimes you don't want to be bad during that guy sitting there. You want to work with him, and you get a better appreciation for that. So, I certainly just want to say that I don't view the introduction of this, which would take effect two years from now. There's certainly not anything in the near future, but I don't want that to be any reflection on the job that I think Scott's doing at the mayor's position. I very much appreciate the job he's been doing, and he and I had a little bit of history before, but I think that's behind us, and, you know, I think it's largely because of the way he's reached out and handled the position that he's done there. So, anyhow, that's the short version. The long version is here, written out on the staff report. I think it will help the city move forward, and let us always progress in a spirit of, hey, we're five council members up here together, all of us sharing in the duties of this process. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McKee?
Thank you, ma'am. I wanted to go a little deeper into this, as to why this is happening and why we're suggesting it. When you sit up here, what you see, as far as the mayor's office that we have right now, is it is continually a political contention, not so much with this council, but with most other councils I've ever been on, because what happens is, the mayor is elected every two years, meaning the mayor is always running. There is no circumstance where the mayor is not getting ready for the next election, whereas the other members of the council are on four-year terms, and this creates a real problem in one area, and that is that the councilperson can run against the mayor from a safe seat, meaning if you time it right, you run against the mayor from a seat that has two more years for you, and you can basically have no penalty for losing. So, the circumstance you're in is that councilperson can be very political during the time before that, and try and stir things up, which we've seen continuously in the past. I've heard people say things like, I want to elect the mayor directly because I want to pick them. Well, you technically would pick the mayor in the other circumstance, too, because you would be electing the whole council. I do not support the suggestion here that it be done on seniority. I would just as soon suggest that the matter going to election just basically says, we're going to go to a rotating mayor, and that all of the council seats will therefore be a four-year election, and that the methodology that we pick be done by ordinance. And the reason I suggest that is, it'll give us the ability to look at something and make sure that if it's not working well, we can change it without going to another election. Again, neither one of us has an issue with anything that Scott has done over the last two years. I think that this council has worked well together. The problem is that that's an outlier. There have been significant contention. It also has to be understood that the mayor's position is one of a lot of responsibility and not very much power, and I don't mean to say that straightforwardly, Scott.
Oh, that's true.
And what I mean by that is, he, the mayor, not being sexist, is in a position that they by themselves can put items on the agenda, they run the meeting, and they're in a position that they're theoretically the ceremonial head of the city meeting, going to all sorts of events in the valley, which all of us do already, and in certain circumstances, the mayor asks us to attend in his stead anyway. So, I would think that even Scott, in his position, would underscore the fact that it's much more responsibility than it is real power. And second, if I were on the city council in the rotation, I would actually pass on it, because I'm not very good with the ceremonial stuff, and I wouldn't do it. That is a real possibility within the cycle, that you'll have people that aren't in a position that they want the position, and it would just rotate among whoever is on the council at that point that wants to do it. I think that increasing the term to four years, and as an aside, as a historical background of that, back when this was put together, the people that did it wanted the possibility of the city council to turn over at every election. That's where the two-year term came from. They were in a position that they wanted the mayor to turn every two years, everyone else every four years, so every two years, you're electing three people, and the council majority can change at that point. It seems to me that that's, for the problems it causes, that that's a pretty weak reason, really, when it comes down to it. So, as far as I'm concerned, we're just bringing this up as a suggestion, because we've talked about this among ourselves for five years, somewhere around in there, whether we were going to do this or not, to bring it forward, to let the community think about it a little bit, and see if it is something we want to do. Thank you.
Before we get into debate, the two people who sponsored this item have spoken. We're gonna open up the public comments. This will be three minutes, once you state your name.
I'm upset. This really upsets me, because I see my city after nine years of living here, going in such a positive direction. Our mayor is wonderful. I don't want another mayor. He's doing a great job, and I'm thankful. Our chief, Chuck, is doing such a great job. Our city is finally moving in a positive direction. Why rock the boat? No, and we're not Ranch Mirage, because Ranch Mirage is not connected like we are. We're close. We're a family. We don't want somebody rotating around every year. I want to vote for the mayor, and whoever he is, I will respect that person, because he deserves that respect. But please, we are on the right track. I would love to have a mayor for four years. Yes, he deserves that. He deserves to be, have those four years to work, to succeed, and this mayor cares for my city. He is involved every which way into this city. He's born here, he lives here, his family's here. Please, don't rock the boat now.
Thank you, Donna. Mr. Gary?
Good evening, councilmembers. Gary Gardner here as a resident of Desert Hot Springs at this moment. I would oppose this motion. I believe the mayor should be directly elected by the voters, not rotated. The mayors should be separate. Additional responsibilities are required. They should want to be the mayor. It should be something that they do because it, it shouldn't be something they do because it's their turn. I know other cities may do this, but we shouldn't. I think it minimizes the role and diminishes it. The mayor's role is not a ceremonial role. It's not something that should be somebody's turn. And as you know, I'm running for council, and I'm not running for mayor. I don't want to be mayor. If I wanted to run for mayor, I'd run for mayor. If I'm fortunate enough to be elected, I want to be a council member. I don't want to be the mayor when it's my turn. The citizens elect you to be council members. They elect the mayor to be member. They don't elect you to take turns being mayor, as if it's some sort of a toy to pass amongst each other. I don't believe it makes any less, makes the mayor's job any less political either. In fact, it probably makes it more political to go through this route, because it encourages people to stick around so that they get to be mayor for a year. I would rather see us go to a four-year term for a mayor, not a two-year mayor, so that the mayor isn't an instant lame duck and has to start campaigning again. The way to get politics out of that role is to make sure that he doesn't have to start, or she doesn't have to start running, the instant that they get elected. So, as I would, Mr. McKee pointed out, the best way to go with this, I think, is to go back to a four-year term for mayor. Keep them directly elected, and I would urge you to reject this motion. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Mr. Burckhardt?
Being third, it sounds like everything's already been said that I wanted to say. I've lived in many cities in the East Coast, in Salt Lake City, in Utah, and, anyway. I don't understand why there's only a two-year mayor term here. It makes absolutely no sense to me, from every political, from every city council I've ever been around, or looked at, or seen at, been seen at. I believe the mayor should be a four-year term. I think because, for example, what Joe said, he wants to pass on being the mayor. Well, so then, what, we only got two people, three people, that want to play mayor? I don't buy that. I think the people want to elect who they want to elect. One of the things I find odd here, that happens in other cities, and I think it has to do because of our size, is that council members represent certain areas of the city. So, it's not like, basically, you guys are all at large right now, because you're just elected from the general public. Well, in, obviously, other cities, you have a representative from Passion Heights, you have a representative from Downey-Brownstown, you have a representative. There's different districts. I would like to see that happen. I'm not sure we're not big enough for that to happen. I do not want to see a rotating mayorship, because I think, like has been said before, we vote for a mayor, we vote for council for different reasons, we vote for the mayor for different reasons, and I do believe that the mayor is a figurehead for the city. And I think to be consistent, and with the rebranding and everything that we're doing, if we start changing mayors every year, the rest of the valley, which I don't really care about, but I know a lot of people here do, the rest of the valley will judge us and say, why are you doing this? And some of those other cities that do it, they're big country clubs, and the people just change positions back and forth. They run here, they run there, they're appointed to this position, and I think some, if some heavy, heavy research was done, that would probably be proven. Again, I think they're country clubs. I don't think we are, and I think the people that you guys represent vote for individuals. They don't vote for a rotating mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak to this item? Last call, final call. Public comments are closed. I'm just gonna make some quick comments, and then I'll get back in the queue here. I respect my colleagues, and I respect their decision to put this here for discussion. This doesn't damage me as of now, as the mayor, taking me out of the role that I'm in, and I appreciate the public and your comments and everything you've said. My whole thing, and Mr. Betts and I had a conversation a long time ago about this, and I really think there needs to be a little more public outreach done. I think there should be two items on the ballot if we're going to go forth, and let the public decide that. Should there be a four-year mayor, or should there be a rotating mayor? And I think the public should decide that. I don't think we should just put one on there. Where we failed one time, as a council, when we wanted to raise the sales tax by 1%, we did it late in the year. We did it close to the election cycle, and we didn't do a lot of public outreach, and we lost by a few points on that. So, I'm kind of feeling this could end up down that path, because we're kind of late in the year. We're running up on a deadline here, and I think we really need to get some more public outreach on this. Is it necessary to do this year? Could we hold it off to the following year in a special election or something? I'm not sure what the cost would be. I know we haven't put any cost towards this. We probably should have done this a couple months ago, so we could have added it in the budget. Would there be more of a cost, Mr. City Clerk, to add items?
Yes, it'd be about $10,000 to $15,000 per measure.
Okay. So, that is something I think we need to take into consideration, because we're gonna have to come up with that, if one item's put on, but I really do think there needs to be two items, and the public needs to make that decision, not us, as council members up here in the future. If I was not sitting here in this seat, I would have an opinion on what I would vote for, but I don't think that's right to say up here right now. But I'm, again, I think the public needs that opportunity. Mr. McKee, Mr. Betts are back in the queue, but Ms. Zavala hasn't had a chance yet. I'm gonna let her go first, and then I'll go back to Mr. McKee, and then Mr. Betts.
I would just say, this is a, an item that I've been thinking about. I keep going back and forth on it, so I think at the end of the day, you know, it's tough, right? I think, first, I'd like to say, I'm not gonna make that decision. I mean, at the end of the day, I couldn't make up my mind about, I still, if this were on a ballot, I still wouldn't know what my vote would be. So, at the end of the day, what I was thinking was like, okay, well, if I haven't made up my mind about this specific, how I would vote in an election like this, you know, I don't necessarily want to make the decision for other people as to whether or not they could vote on it. So, just in terms of me saying, hey, you know, it'll be up to the voters, because at the end of the day, you could vote yes or no on it. And just for that reason, I'm gonna say, I'm cool with leaving it to the voters, and seeing what it is that everybody wants to decide. I myself still have to make up my mind as to how I would vote on this. So, I mean, as far as just putting it on the ballot and having people vote yes or no, then, you know, that's okay. At the end of the day, it's not gonna be a decision that I'm gonna be making. It's gonna be up to the public. Everybody can vote either yes or no on it, so.
Ms. Pye?
I've heard a couple of comments, and I'm a little different than what all of you are talking about. First of all, it's not in the budget. Second of all, I don't know why this is an emergency item.
Who would be the next person? Yeah, so who? I'm sorry, what did you say?
He said if you pass it the way it is, it would go on seniority, so whoever's on the council at the time would be the senior person, would be mayor.
Yeah, but I think he was saying that he'd like to have a session as to decide how that would work, as he's opposed to the seniority.
This should be your decision. This should not be our decision. We are not supposed to be governing from up here. We're your public servants. We're supposed to do what you want to do. And giving you till the 28th of this month is not enough time. A lot of people don't know about this yet. That's not enough time for you to think. If you want to, really want a four-year mayor, two-years mayor, or if you had four people, do you still want three elections, or do you want two elections every time something comes up? One of the things in here says, "An ordinance of the people of the city of Desert Hot Springs." That's not the people. That's us, and we shouldn't be doing that. And, it's supposed to be about you. And as I said, we're your public servants. What do you want us to do? And it's not in the budget, so it's not a rush. There's two more years that this can happen. City Clerk said it's going to be about $10,000, $15,000. This is $10,000 right now. No.
Mr. McKee?
There are very many times that I disagree with my friend Jan Pye, but it is exactly our job to govern. We don't have a direct democracy. If you wish to have a direct democracy, we could actually probably do that now with the technology that exists. But we're elected to read the packets that no one else reads. I mean, how many people here read the 600-page packet that we had for today? Some. That's what we're here for, is to be representatives of the people, not necessarily doing what they want, because they're not getting full information. Now, I want to stress, we're not passing anything with this, other than having an election. The people would decide. Now, if my council friends want to postpone this and do it at a different time, I don't have a problem with that. But let me explain something here. Scott's not gonna be mayor forever.
What? I'm not, I'm not living forever?
I totally support Scott. There is no problem with this. What I'm saying is, there's been a lot more confrontation with mayors previous to Scott than there have been councils that have worked along. So, the attachment to Scott as a reason we're doing this is not true. It's just not true. No, I'm talking specifically to someone that made the comment out in the audience. I, I'm just in a position, we need to talk about this. We need to think about it. I disagree with the fact that the other cities are that much different than we are. They work just as well as what we've done here. Probably 40% of the city governments in the state are doing this now. If the people don't want to do it, I don't have a problem with that. But I will say this, if we keep things pretty much as they are, I'm gonna be back telling you, I told you so, when there are the conflicts we have in the future. Thanks.
Mr. Betts?
Yeah, I just wanted to clear up a couple of things, and I think the, if there's any misconception that this is the council acting to do this, we're not. We're just putting this on the ballot. So, nobody here is, I don't know if they're getting the sense that some people think that we're unilaterally imposing this now, and that's not the case. This is to put it on the ballot for the voters to decide, and that process can happen any number of ways. You could have people out there gathering signatures to qualify something for the ballot, or you can do it here, the council can do it without that signature gathering process. And this is two years down the road, so that pretty much takes all the immediate politics out of the situation, because it's not gonna affect anything in this next election. If you wait until midterm or down the road, now you're starting to, the closer you get to an election when it takes effect, the closer you're getting into a political element, and that's why the reason for doing this now, rather than waiting. And just to run down the cities, I know Cathedral City just went to this process, and they had a very contentious situation with a mayor in that city for a while. I mean, those catfights are legendary. And you have Palm Desert, Indio, Ranch Mirage, Indian Wells, and as far as, you know, this isn't any type of toy that gets passed around. When you watch these other cities, and the mayor who steps into that position in any of the cities, they all take it very seriously. I know down there in Indio, or any of the cities, when it's somebody's turn to step up and do that position, they do it well. And I can certain, I think it's a legitimate argument for somebody to say, well, we would prefer to have a directly elected mayor. I get that. That's, and the four-year term, I can see that certainly makes sense, but if you go, look, most of the cities are a two-year term. I can't figure that one out either. But I, from what I've seen in other cities and how this works, that's what I have viewed as been the smoothest way to take all the, to take as much of the ranker out of city councils as you can. This council, this is a rarity that you have. We can go say, hey, our council is getting along. I've been up here, and that hasn't always been the case up here. It's been pretty contentious. And so, the public will decide this, and if you go to a special election, they're gonna have you in a higher cost. There's, you know, some of this is just the function of government that you have to do, no matter what the matter is, and so, if you take this out to a special election, now you're, the cost from the register of voters is even higher, correct, Gerald? You don't, if it is an added item, there's already costs are covered. So, people are already going to the polls, you already get the ballots. So, I think you're slipping in here with the least expensive way to put something on the ballot. So, I appreciate the comments from the public. I'm sure you've probably got comments, the people who took the time to show up here. I'm sure there's other people who would come here and go the other way, so.
I can't open it back up right now. It's a very public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I've got, and if there's, oh, Councilmember McKee, if you wanted to make some kind of motion contrary to what we got here, I'd be receptive to that. I think the way, the seniority is the way to work it out, but if that was worked out later by ordinance, as the city attorney had suggested, then I'd be comfortable with that.
So, you're, okay. Just one quick question. You had the city attorney write this?
No.
Okay, who wrote the?
We had the city attorney assist us. We worked this out.
Okay.
No, the city attorney.
If you can ask the city clerk your clarification, have him put it in writing to us, then I can, I can maybe answer your question for you, but I can't open public comments again. So, are you done?
No, I just wanted to say, we, you know, obviously, we want to check and make sure we get this right before we put it on there. We're not lawyers, so yes.
I'm gonna make some comments, and we're gonna go around again. Again, I want to clarify. My point of view is that if we're gonna put one item, we need to put both. I've been on the city council for 11 years, and I've heard this discussion many times. I think I joined the city council right after that measure failed, and I think you need to give the people the opportunity of our community to make a decision based on what they feel is important to them. I can pretty much guarantee, I mean, I think we should do more public outreach, but I understand the budget issue. Two, I'm concerned that we didn't budget for this item, so this is a concern to me, because this is gonna be another $10,000 at least, if we put on the budget, on the election. It could be more. But giving the opportunity to the public to make a choice, this is not a choice at this point. This is, this is a yes or no answer to rotating. There might be a lot of people out there that want a four-year mayor, and I get the whole point, because I've been watching politics in this community for almost 30 years, and I've seen it up and down. My personal opinion is, you either have a rotating mayor, or you have a four-year mayor. The two-year mayor just doesn't work. It really doesn't. So, I'm agreeing, I agree on that, but the people do need a choice, and so, it's really hard for me to support this completely without the other portion being supported, and both items being on the election. I understand Mr. Betts's point about if we do go to a special election, it's gonna cost a lot more than what it is now, but maybe that's what we need to do, because we need to do more public outreach, and we need to budget the next cycle for a special election. This is not something that we should take lightly for the future of Desert Hot Springs. These ordinances were developed, and I think rethought about in the 80s or something, when it came to the two-year mayor and getting a majority, but I don't think the majority thing ever worked out for anybody that ever tried that. I always think there ended up being two people on one side, one person on the other, so. So those are my opinions. Again, I'm only one person of five. Ms. Zavala?
I think, again, I don't think any of us are trying to make a decision for anybody. At least from my perspective, I don't plan on making a decision for anybody. In fact, as I mentioned before, I have to personally think about what I... Would I, in seeing that measure on my ballot, like, I'd have to think about it, because it's a big decision. You know, I can see pros and cons to both. So I would be perfectly okay with putting both items on the ballot. You know, one for your mayor, or two, a rotating mayor. I'd be comfortable just putting both on there. My concern with the special election is just, in terms of voter turnout, I feel like it's such an important decision. I feel generally during those special off-year elections, we don't get the higher voter turnout, which is the reason why we had to extend our term limits to align with the state election cycle, specifically because we don't get good voter turnout on off-year elections. So I'd be okay with putting both on the ballot, and then just leaving it to the public. You know, I personally, like I said, I'd still have to toy with the idea and really think about, you know, what it is that I would personally want to vote for. So I'm okay with putting both on the agenda. As far as the rotating basis based on seniority, you know, I don't know. Once again, it's up to the public. So I don't know if we want to have, like, the rotating mayor, and then with that selection, based on, like, public input or something. You know, I don't know how we want to word that, but, or to be determined. I don't know. Ultimately, though, I'm okay with putting both out to the vote, and just letting everyone decide, me included.
I think Cathedral City wrote a really good ordinance on their rotating mayor. So if that's something we could look at, if it's pretty much supports what you guys are trying to get at, they wrote it where they took the politics basically out of it completely. So that's a good one to mirror, if that's what we move forth with. Ms. Pie?
My main thing is that the public has not had enough time to figure this out. And I understand what you're saying, Mr. McKee, that do they read the agenda? But they are asking for who they want to serve to read all of those agendas. And the city clerk said it would cost 10,000 to 15,000 dollars. It's 10,000 if you do it right now. And there hasn't been enough people. This, I think, needs to be rewritten. The first signatory you have, if there's a rebuttal, is city council. The last person is members of the community. I don't think that's right either. And yes, I think there needs to be more discussion, and not until August 28th. And that's all.
Mr. McKee?
I think we flog this one to death, I think, as much as we're going to. I would suggest, I'll make a motion now, and we can see if we can get some support. The first part of the motion is that the mayor's term, well, the mayor's or fifth person that's left on the council will be four years. And that the people, as a second item, will vote on having a rotating mayor with the methodology being formatted by ordinance at a later date. To begin in 2020.
I have a question, I think.
Get the motion on there, let me see if we have a second, then we can go to discussion. Mayor, the fifth person, you have a four-year, voters vote on rotating mayor. So you're not adding any other items, just the rotating mayor?
No, no, no. I want it to be formulated so we're voting that the, there is no longer a two-year term as one item. And then the second item being, voters will vote on the rotating mayor, with the ordinance as to the methodology being set up at a later date. And the reason I'm doing that is because then it will give us the ability to modify how the person is chosen without having to go back to the voters.
But you're not adding an item on there to change the mayor's seat to a four-year term?
Oh, I am. I am. I'm saying, number one suggestion is, the fifth person/mayor will become a four-year term, no matter what. And then the second one is, the voters will vote on a rotating mayor.
I'm just asking.
Just to clarify, so that first component, is it basically putting in another measure saying, "Would you like a four-year mayor?" Okay, cool, just making sure.
And that'll have to come back written to a future meeting, in which there's still time.
It will have to come back by July 5th, because that's our last meeting before the...
But there's still time to do that.
So it's putting both measures?
Correct. And how, I understood it, and please correct me if I am wrong. It would have to come back, I would think, on July 3rd. I would have to...
That's great.
Okay, great. And then how, with respect to the first portion, it's, shall the measure to select, it's a directly elected mayor, be for a four-year term? Because...
Yeah.
Because the second portion would be, shall the measure to select the mayor of the city of Desert Hot Springs...
The confusion factor about what you're saying is this. If they vote, which is possible, to go to a rotating mayor, then the mayor's office doesn't need to have a four-year term. That council person will have a four-year term.
Correct.
So how we phrase that is going to be...
Okay, exactly. You got my point exactly. It would have to be, if it were a four-year term, we would have to stay with the...
What I would say is this. That the first thing should be, should we have a rotating mayor? And all council terms be four years? First question. Second question. If that doesn't pass, and I don't know how you set that up, should the mayor's term be four years if that other ordinance does not pass? Do you see what I mean?
I do.
I think you're looking at two separate, you're going to have two separate ballot measures.
Yeah.
And one will supersede the other somehow. I've seen that happen before.
I think we can do that. I'd have to, I'd have to research, look at that. But if we could do it, I'll bring both back.
If I'm going to second this, then, on the basis, the second would be that we're going ahead with this first one, but saving the selection process to leaving the flexibility open to the council, rather than setting it by ordinance of the voter. So there'd be some changes there. And then the next meeting, somebody's going to bring forward the other one, the direction of the councils to come forward with another ordinance, so that would essentially give the voters two options at the next election.
No matter what happens, we want to get rid of the two years.
Yes.
So how we do that?
Or we'll go to a rotating mayor, and be one or the other.
So we'd have two measures, pretty much, on the ballot?
Yeah, but you'd have work to do to come back by the next meeting with that, and working out with whoever the proponents are of that is, I guess, huh? Okay, so I'll...
Just one quick comment there. Part of me would like to leave in the option to keep it as is, because then I feel like we're choosing for them, either to have one or the other. And I kind of feel like if we're going to do it, then we should just kind of...
So let me ask a question. If both of these items are on there, do they have to pass by a certain percentage to be implemented by the public? Do they have to have 51% to pass? Or the highest, the highest amount on the measure will pass, is the question? So if you have a four-year mayor on there, and then you have a rotating mayor, the four-year mayor gets 66%, and the, whatever 40% is left, does the... Yeah. What do you have, do you have to have a percentage to pass?
I think that what happens then, if you vote to get rid of the mayor, then the other thing becomes void then, at that point, from my perspective. You're in a position that if you voted to get rid of the mayor, there's no requirement then to have the mayor with four years.
So in either ordinance, in either ordinance, we need to write in whichever one gets the highest vote count, supersedes the other one, and becomes the law? Can you do that?
You can, I think you can do it that way. It's been numbered before.
Yeah, I think that there's a way to do it, because there's a lot of times you have opposing measures on the ballot. There has to be a way to do that. And that's exactly what these are, right? Both, we cannot have both at the same time. You can't have a rotating mayor at the same time as you have a directly elected mayor. It just doesn't work. So what I'll look to see is what exactly needs to happen. Is it something that, whichever is the highest number of votes is the one that passes? Or how exactly, you know, is that done? But oftentimes on ballots, we do, you see opposing measures all the time. So...
We just had one in the last election.
What was that?
There was just one in the last election.
So I want to, I don't know it off the top of my head, but I want to say, I think it is by the highest number of voters, votes, rather, that that's what happens. But I will look at that prior to the next meeting. I will also come back with two ordinances, two proposed ordinances, and two proposed resolutions, which contain the two proposed ballot questions.
Because of all the, there is a comment that's been made, because of all the changes and everything else, would it benefit us as a city council to table this to the next meeting? This item alone, knowing we're coming back with two new ordinances and have those...
I don't have a problem with that.
Have those drafted up, so we can all have some time to look at them, and then...
I think probably, part of the problem is the schedule of, you know, coming up with the, the schedule that's coming up. And I think we've got one now. We can put that on. You can certainly have the ability to put the other one on the agenda coming forward. Let's get this one just then on there. You can bring the other one forward. Everybody's going to vote how they vote anyhow. And let's go with that one at the future meeting, and continue. And you've got indication from the council that everybody wants to do both. But I don't think we've got one that's written now, and let's just go with that. That's what I would say to do.
I'm just thinking, you might have a lot more people want to make some comments towards this.
Okay, well, the other thing is, is that we have opened up, by this whole process, we've opened up now the possibility of getting exactly what the audience wants. Some of the public speakers have wanted us to go to a four-year elected mayor. And before any of this discussion took place, we're all going to grous and complain that we're only going to have a two-year elected mayor again. So just by the virtue of this process has been opened up, it's always good to have discussion and debate, and that's what we're doing here. But you could have 100 people and 100 people, and it still comes down to us to decide.
No, I get that, I'm just...
To at least put it on the ballot. What, I have no problem with tabling it, though, until next time. I mean, we...
Well, is everybody going to be at this next meeting?
I'm not.
Okay, so we've got, we've got members who aren't going to be at this next meeting. So I'll make a motion to go with this item. And did you, Neil, are you looking at the...
I put my name in the queue. I have one more question.
There is a motion on the table. Let me see if we can get a second, then I'm going to go to Ms. Zavala for comments.
It's already been seconded.
Okay, can you guys put your...
I think. Oh, no.
I need a maker, I don't have a maker on the screen. There we go. And a second.
I think you said you were going to second that.
Oh, I was just going to see what your comments were before a second.
Well, I need to get a second on it. We need to get the motion a second on the screen first.
I'll second for the purpose of discussion.
There you go.
And this means that we are going ahead, with my second means that we are going ahead with this one tonight, and the other one will come back in the future. Okay, got it.
I guess the only comment I'm going to make is, I do appreciate having both. I kind of feel, though, that we did hear, we've heard from, we've heard, like, both sides of this, but we haven't heard from, because there are plenty of people that are not here today. So I don't know if there are people out there watching at home that actually want to keep it as is. So I kind of feel like it should be, you have to get over 50% of the vote in order for any of, in either, in order for one of these to pass. And if it doesn't, then it stays as is, because then that, to me, that's showing that the public wants to keep it as is. I just feel like we need to give everybody the option, because the people at home that may have a differing opinion...
Well, they do have the option. If they vote no on both of them, then everything stays.
What we've been discussing here is that one would supersede the other. So what I'm just saying is, it should be, it has to get the majority of the vote. Otherwise, it stays as is, if it doesn't get over 50% of the vote. Just to give everybody that clear-cut, hey, you know, either we keep it as is, because it didn't get over 50% of the vote, or if one of these gets 50% of the vote, then the voters spoke. And that's kind of my personal opinion, just for fairness.
As the person making the second, I'd accept that as a condition of the friendly amendment. If the maker of the motion wants to accept that. So the additional condition of, to pass, has to get 50 plus one, whatever. Majority.
This is the last thing I'm going to say. You just saw how much of a problem we had with discussing this. And we haven't asked you yet. If we put it on till next year, there won't be a humdrum, because it'll be a year before the election. I don't understand the rush to get this done. But that's all I'm going to say.
And I just wanted to answer that quickly, if I could. There's not really a rush to get this done. This has been thought about for a long time. We're not the only city to do this. And the public has between now and November. Long, long time. No, the public has between now and November to decide how they're going to vote. They got plenty of time.
Which is more time than you're going to have to decide who your council people are going to be. Which is more time than deciding who your council people are going to be.
That's right. They got, they know now. They can start thinking about it now, because we're putting it on the ballot. We don't even know who's running yet.
Yes, Mr. City Manager?
Just to answer Councilmember Zavala's question. If either of these do not get 50%, they both fail anyway, and it goes to, stays as is. We don't even have to include that. By law, that's what would occur.
But it needs to be rewritten somewhere, where whoever gets the highest count supersedes the other one, right?
And that's the issue that I would need to go back and research, because I don't know if both pass. If both pass, I need to look at that.
I think, what she's saying is, it needs 51% to pass, not 40 and 40. This is different than what you're talking about.
So in order, in order to make it clear-cut, it would be, one of these, in order for them to pass, has to get 51% of the vote, the majority of the vote. If neither one of these gets the majority of the vote, then it stays as is. And that...
That's, I think that's what would be, how it is as a matter of law. They would have to get...
It's because you keep talking about, like, what if they both pass? If they both can't...
If you go, if both of them get 51% of the vote, let's say.
Okay, 51, over 50%, that's the majority. I don't know. However you want to word that. I'm just saying, if neither one reaches over 50%, then it just stays as is. And then we, you can word it however it is that you need to word it, to make it...
Okay. I'm sorry for interrupting, but I don't understand, because if, if one ballot question gets 50, or gets 49% of the vote, it fails as a matter of law. If another ballot question gets 49% of the vote, it fails as a matter of law. The only, the only issue is that I see, and if one gets 51%, it passes, and the other gets 49%, it fails. We have one solution. The only issue that I see is if both ballot questions get 51% of the vote, now all of a sudden, which way do we go? That's the only scenario that I see.
And I'm saying, add something into the ordinances to state that supersede, if we can, by law. Because what could happen is, you're going to have people out there, you're going to have 3,000 voters, and, you know, a certain percentage is going to vote yes, a certain percentage is going to vote yes on the other one, and then there's a certain percentage is just not going to vote on it, because they don't want to. So you could end up with a 51% passing rate on each item. So we have to have something written somewhere that supersedes, which is the highest.
Well, it seems to me that what goes on is this. If the, or if the question passes, that the mayor, meaning you get 51% that say they want to go to a rotating mayor, then you're in a position that you go to the rotating mayor. If 51% of the voters vote, or 70% vote for four-year term, but 51% change, that want to change to a rotating mayor, that's where the question is, exactly what our lawyers talking about. Now, what you're saying, Scott, is that you'd like that to be by the highest percentage. I would say, then, let's only put the one question on, because I can tell you right now, the four-year term is going to have a much higher vote than the rotating mayor, even if the rotating mayor passes.
So that doesn't meet what I'm trying to accomplish here, is giving two choices. In the measure, you're giving, because then you're not giving two choices. You're taking the mayor's seat to a four-year term, which is fine. But then you're going to a rotating mayor also, which is not what the public's talking about. You had three opposed that tonight, saying that they want a four-year, they want to directly elect a mayor. So what the ballot term should be is, directly elect a mayor for four years as one measure, or go to a rotating mayor on... or go to a rotating mayor on senior, or however it's written. But the problem is you're going to have two measures, so you could have 51% on each measure passed, so you have to have some sort of language in both measures stating that one supersedes the other on the highest.
I agree. I don't know that it goes by highest percentage, though. I, what you, what I think you say is, if, let's say 51% vote to go to the rotating mayor, then the four-year term of the mayor becomes null at that point. You're, you're not even in a position, you're dealing with that.
What I want to accomplish, I couldn't vote for that.
But you, you understand where I'm coming from.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I'm just, I'm trying to make it more simp, simple. Either you want a four-year mayor, or you want a rotating mayor. You need to make a decision. That's what the ballot measure should say. And that should be the choice.
Mr. Mayor, if I'm.
The rotating mayor is still a four-year term. So I, do you have had a question, and I want the council's opinion, there's, since we've done so many changes here, there's been asks from the public for us to reopen public comments. Does anybody have any objection to this?
You're the mayor.
I just want to make sure. Okay, I'll reopen public comments. You'll have, I would like to have two minutes. Would you state your name?
Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you can see amongst, the debate amongst yourselves, how difficult this is. I believe what you should do tonight, if you insist on proceeding as you're going down this road, is direct the city attorney to draft an appropriate ordinance, put it out for public comment for another hearing before this council, so that you can get the input that you need. You, you've changed this ordinance and made it almost a U-turn from what it was originally. I appreciate that. I think you're going in a lot, in the right direction, but I think it deserves another round of public comment, not just from myself, not from the people here tonight, but from the public at large. It needs to be redrafted by the city attorney with some appropriate changes, as you guys have directed tonight, brought back to a future council, put out on a public notice, let people look at it, let people come back and comment on it again, before you put it on the ballot. And it isn't just putting it on the ballot. I think, with all due respect, that's kind of a cop-out. There are some things you don't put on the ballot. You don't put marriage equality on the ballot. That was a huge mistake. There are some things that, as an elected representative, you are charged with making before you put them on the ballot. If this is something the public wants, the public will bring that to you through an initiative process, not coming from you. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to this item?
Mike Picardi again. My main concern is, again, that, first of all, I think this needs a lot more work, because obviously, nobody knows what the verbiage should be, and how we're going to wind up with two winning ordinances, which is going to negate whatever it's trying to do. Looking at the way it's written now, I think that, you know, if, if they get a four-year mayor, and that passes, and the other one passes, then the four-year, everybody's on four years. But it's still, it's too shady. There's, there's things about who's going to get which majority, because there's nothing to vote against, in a way. So that's usually what voters look at. You got it, you got a pro and a con. And both of these complement each other. So I don't believe the way they're written and the way it's looked at, that there's, there's a yay and a nay on how to do this, that there, there aren't competing, because one is an extension of the other. The mayor becomes, we change that position to be a four-year term. Don't even call it a mayor. So we do that, and then we have a rotating mayor. So both of them, they're kind of symbiotic in a way. I would like to see somehow, and I don't know how, because you guys are over there on staff, and that's what you do, how to make it appear, or how to make it sound so the public can understand it. We're having a heck of a time understanding, and I think some of us here kind of follow this a bit. Again, there's nothing to vote against, and I think that's where the hiccup's going to be. You'd be perfect world, you do one, and then you do the other. But to do these two now, like I said, again, I'm reiterating, so that's my only thought. I think we're rushing it, and I think a lot more work needs to be done on the verbiage. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted, state your name, your two minutes will be gone.
Ted Maroff in Desert Hot Springs. I've heard a lot of complaints about this city, but I've never heard one about the issue we're talking about here tonight. Never heard anybody, except for the exception of when Mayor Wajukar was in office, there was discussion about going to a four-year term for the mayor, and it didn't happen. Appears that you're reinventing the wheel and spending time and energy and money on something that's not necessary, when the city has other issues that we really need to concentrate on. I don't think any of this is necessary. That's just my personal opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this item? Last call? All right, we'll close public comments for this item now. Go back to Mr. Betts.
Yeah, I don't want to go on this too much more. The, Mr. Spawning to some of those comments is, first off, the public is going to have plenty of time to weigh in on this, between now and November. And if somebody wants to put up another ballot measure, they can certainly do it. You have time. That's, that's the way this process works. You put up a ballot measure, you throw it out there, and you see if people are going to vote. I don't see the need for a ton of public debate on putting something to the public for a decision. It seems like it's redundant. What, what's being made is the case by people who don't want this measure, making the case that, well, we need to delay it, slow it down, and ultimately not even put it on at all. But the, as far as this changing, the only thing that's changed is the methodology for selecting it. The basic question on this agenda item that was posted tonight is, do you want to, is putting this measure on to go to a rotating mayor? And that is as is, with the only exception being the methodology, and that's being left up to the council through ordinance, rather than tying the hands of the council with a vote. And that was a concession to Mr. Councilmember McKee, who wanted to, wasn't comfortable with the methodology that he saw in this ordinance. And, but I, again, I just can't, I'm having a hard time understanding. I, I think the, the perception is, is that this decides it. All this decides is to put the question to the voters. It's been lots of thought put into this. We're not the only ones to do this. So I don't know, you know, you've got all the time in the world to convince people of your position going through the election. You can campaign, do whatever you want to. That's our American process. And the proposal is to put this out to the voters, and by the next council meeting, we have the other one come to us, and we can hash that out and put that out to the voters, and the process is done. So I'm, that's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McKee?
I, I, I understand the passion on the, on the side, the people that don't want to do this, but bluntly, this was put on the agenda and was noticed to people. And we had three and now four people that came and said, don't do this, out of 28,000. So there, there is already noticing that's take play, taken place. If people were passionate enough about that to look at the packet, they could have done it. You know, I, I think, my perception is exactly what Russ said. All we're saying is, number one, we are required by law to take this to the people, because of the way that this system was set up. If, if we could make this an ordinance and just do it by ourselves, it would be another whole thing. But what we're saying is, from our standpoint, and for, for, I can give you three or four mayors, that, that this was a massive problem with, everything from Mayor Bias to Mayor Sanchez, to a whole bunch of other things. So this is not a situation where it was one guy 12 years ago. It was a bunch of things, up until the point even that, that I think our present mayor stabilized the situation, and I laud him for that, and I support him for continuing to do that. That's not the point. The point is that at some stage, and I'm not saying Scott's going to die, but Scott's going to decide not to run again at some point. So then, you know, it becomes not personal. It becomes, is this the thing we want to do in the future, to make sure that the sort of contention we've seen in a majority of the time, there's been a mayor in this city? Not every once in a while. In a majority of the time, there's been a mayor in this city, it's been a real point of contention. So, you know, that, that's the position I'm taking. I'd, I'd like to just call a question and get done with this.
One more person in the queue, and then we'll go for the question. Ms. Zavala?
I, I just do want to make sure, though, that I'm understanding the way that it's written. So one is just four-year elected mayor, two is rotating mayor every year, as it is, and in what was in the packet, right? Because I, I don't think if it's a rotating mayor, it should be four years.
Except, except that we're going to determine the methodology, it won't be by seniority, it'll be by.
But it'll still be the one year.
Right.
I just feel like if it's a rotating thing, then it shouldn't be like a full four years.
Mr. Mayor, prior, prior to the call, because there's been changes, can I at least read everything into the record, how I understand the ballot measure to read, so that it is done precisely? So if it does go to the registrar's office, the, the resolution, since this, this would not be coming back, as I understand it, on the third?
Will you bring back a, a separate item on the third?
I would bring back, as I understand it, how the motion is, 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 is the rotating mayor would be passed this evening? Is that correct? Okay, that's by the motion maker? And then the question about the direct-elect four-year term would come back on July 3rd?
With a, with a solution on who would.
On how to, how to, yeah.
Who would supersede?
Either supersede, or couldn't we ask, you know, possibly, can you please vote for one or the other, or something like that? But, but some kind of resolution. But because of the motion makers' motion, I'd like to at least read how the, the question would be in the ballot, and in addition, for the record, fix the actual ordinance.
Go ahead.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. So how, the resolution, which calls the question, the question would read, shall the measure to select the mayor of the city of Desert Hot Springs City Council annually for a one-year term, with the procedure for rotation, to be adopted by ordinance of the city council, commencing in the year 2020, with all city council members having a four-year term be adopted? Is that correct? Okay. And then the ordinance that would actually accompany it, and this is the ordinance that the voters would vote on, all of section 2.04, 0.05, 0 would be stricken, and it would be replaced with, commencing in the year 2020, at the, at the second regular meeting in November, the mayor shall be chosen by the city council pursuant to the procedure set forth in an ordinance, should we say, to be adopted six months prior, or something like that? Okay? An ordinance to be adopted by the city council, which ordinance shall be adopted at least six months prior to November 20th period. All city council seats shall have a term of four years.
So there would be still a debate on how the ordinance would be adopted on this election? And there's two, two measure items to be put on the ballot, if the next, if it passes on the next meeting.
And then just, just to make sure, if we're going to put in some language in there, then I think we also need to specify, and if neither of these pass, then it stays as is. Just so people know, like, they have that option by not voting for.
Yeah, you could write that into both measures, couldn't you? If these items, if both, either or, measure does not pass, the current.
It stays status quo, or something like that. I will write that into both the resolution and the ordinance, well, not the ordinance, but the resolution.
Any objection to the motion makers on that?
Yes, we already said.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the table. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmember Py against.
All right, item number 13 is Palm Springs International Airport Commission nomination. I don't think we need to report on this, but Ms. Py has said that she would sit on this. Mr. City Clerk, if I'm correct, we have to make an official nomination, so that Palm Springs City can vote on it, correct?
That is correct.
All right, Ms. Py, unless there's somebody else that wants to sit on that commission.
Can I make the nomination?
Sure.
Are you asking for nomination? Or are you doing it?
No, no, I'm asking. It was made, recommendation in here, that she was going to accept all Ms. Park's assignments.
Presuming she wants to do it, I would like to nominate Jan Py to sit on the airport commission, Palm Springs.
There's a motion, a second. Do you accept?
Yes.
All right, there's a motion, a second, on accepting, please. Oh, any public comments on this item? I see nobody. Please vote.
He's just typing it down. Motion passes unanimously.
Our last item tonight is item number 18, was pulled from the consent calendar by Councilmember McKee, his second reading adoption of the ordinance, amending chapter 17.180, medical marijuana facilities operation locations of Title 17 zoning the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code. Mr. McKee?
I apologize for doing this, but there are two things that I would suggest. I think that on page, packet page 478, item B has been added, which is no changes to the following size of structures or existing, or also existing or approved grade elevations. I would suggest that we had, did not put that in, and I, I don't think that it's necessary, because the, the mechanism of this revolves around administrative approval. If there, if they want, don't want to approve it, they can basically send it to us. The second thing I would say, and I was thinking about this afterwards, there's, there's a difference between 10% of a 50,000 square foot building, and 10% of a 3 million foot building. And what I mean by that is, 100,000 square foot building, 10% is just a 10,000 square foot addition, not as big a deal. But 10% of a million is another million. I mean, 100,000, basically, in that point, we already have a 2.8 million square foot facility that's, that's been approved. So theoretically, under this, you could do 280,000 square feet worth of addition. So what I would suggest is that we think about this a little bit and bring back a different thing, as far as the 10% is concerned, meaning 10% up to a certain square footage, 5% up to a cer, certain square footage, and 2.5% at another square footage. I'm just bringing this up for the council to think about it. I don't want to change it today. I just want to make sure that we take the two items that we did not put in the thing B out, and allow it still to be an administrative approval.
Mr. Betts?
You know what? I'm going to ask you for a little clarification on that, if I could. What was added into this?
Page 478.
Yeah, I got that part.
Item B.
And so item B was added, and we didn't have that in when it went through the first approval, is that what you're saying, Councilmember McKee?
As far as I know, we did not put that in.
Okay, so how did that get put in, if we didn't put it in?
Mr. Mayor, if I may clarify?
Yes.
I didn't add it in. What happened was is they, is I moved them. I moved them under, from section A to section B. So I moved them, and the reason why I moved them is because, how I understood it, was that the city council didn't necessarily want people to, you know, make their structures bigger. First of all, that would be in violation of SEQA. So they were merely moved from section A to section B.
I'm, I'm not sure that the size is of SEQA violation.
So, for example, if somebody wanted, if somebody had a 80,000 square foot facility, and if they wanted to increase the size, because you're saying that they're allowing a 10% deviation, if they wanted to increase their size to 88,000 square feet, they would likely have to go through another SEQA review process, because they're increasing.
Again, I don't know that I agree with that.
Oh, that's, okay.
I, I don't think for a, a small addition to a building, somebody has to go through SEQA all over again, but, you know, you're telling.
It just depends, right?
I think that's a stretch.
Okay. But I didn't add anything. I merely moved them. I, I showed it as, as adding, in bold and underlined, so you could see how they were moved. in bold and underlined, so you could see how they were moved, uh, next time I'll put a comment that, uh, that, you know, I merely moved these, but I did not add them.
Is this a second reading?
What was that?
So, Councilmember McKee, what did you, were you gonna make a motion to correct this?
I'm gonna make a motion to correct that, and take those two things out, and leave those within the ten percent, um-
Leave them under item A?
Yeah, and, and, no, take, take, take them completely away, and allow that to still be administrative approval.
Okay, so I'll second that.
To delete B?
Yes.
Okay.
But the rest of it remaining as it is, but what I would ask, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Is that we think a little bit about the size, what we're allowing them to stretch to, because I think on the top end, it is a problem, you can push the button, and I'll push the second.
I, I just have a quick question here, so if we have not yet, um, identified what that ten percent leeway is going to be, and say it is like a hundred thousand square feet, um, and they would require SEQA, I don't know what would make them have to go through that, but say if they do, if we scratch this off, are we basically telling them you don't have to comply with that, or?
No, we do not, because G, um, if you read further down a little bit, G on page four-eight-eight specifically states that, uh, all projects, of course, would need to, any kind of modification would-
Okay, all right, then that works.
I'll give you guys a quick example, so you have a hundred thousand square-foot building, and you add ten thousand of storage, it's not really gonna do anything, you add ten thousand of manufacturing, you got a whole bunch of traffic, noise, that, that's what we evaluate, that's what we say, yes, SEQA, so that's, right.
And in that circumstance, you would administratively say you're gonna have to go through an additional process.
White review for parking, et cetera, and so forth, yeah.
All right, is everybody on the same page with this, Mr. Betts, you back in the queue? Ms. Zavala, you back in the queue?
No.
All right, is there any public comments on this, anybody like to speak to this item? Last call, final call, all right, close public comments, please vote. Future agenda items, you can talk to City Manager, anybody in public comments that did not speak at the beginning of the meeting may speak now, on items on the agenda, I see nobody coming forth, we are adjourned till July third for the next city council's regular meeting.